On the clock that's sitting in front of me. All right, flip your mics to green, mics, Brian. Good evening. Today is April ninth, twenty twenty four to seven P M. The general township hall. Agenda items this evening zoning case twenty twenty three dash zero five Roman L E G W LLC third meeting zoning case twenty twenty four dash zero three campfire brewing LLC first meeting. Potential zoning resolution amendment discussion and election of officers staff present this evening Joe Schaefer deputy director of development and zoning Paul Benson deputy zoning director. Mr. Schaefer, roll please.
Roll call, Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Teisman.
Present.
Mr. Left.
Here.
Mr. Welch.
Here.
Mr. Wester.
Here.
I'll note that newly appointed member, Mr. Graver did inform us he was not going to be able to be here this evening and Mr. Carter unfortunately submitted his resignation earlier today and told us he would not be here.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for your service. Unfortunately, unfortunate to see you go. Matt, nice job. Congratulations. Welcome to the next five years of fun for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can't wait.
There we go. Statement of policy, this meeting may be recorded such recordings or public record may be posted online and could be subject to review in court. As is the adopted policy of the zoning commission, all applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. The audience may then be granted an opportunity to comment followed by the applicant's response and questions from the commission. The chairperson may limit repetitive debate and reserves the following rights to limit comment to items on the agenda to limit public comment to five minutes per person. To restrict the number of times a member of the public is permitted to speak and to enact any other reasonable ad hoc protocols or measures necessary to maintain a fair, safe and orderly meeting. This policy was adopted by the commission to provide for the respectful constructive and efficient discussion of business scheduled for consideration and to allow for proper due process as required by law. First item up, minutes from the last meeting.
Mr. Chair, I would move, well, we only have March eleventh.
March eleventh, the last regular meeting, sorry.
All right. So yes, Mr. Chair, I have moved to approve the March eleventh twenty twenty four meeting minutes as presented.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any comments or questions? Roll, please.
Roll call, Mr. Bernard. Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Wester.
Yes.
Mr. Left.
Yes, motion passes. Time is now seven oh two. First item up, Roman L E G W LLC requesting approval of a final development plan. To construct an eleven thousand seven hundred square foot office building and a five thousand three hundred twenty seven square foot daycare building. On two point two seven six acres located along North Gateway on an unaddressed lot immediately northeast of seven one zero seven North Gateway. Pin three one seven three four two zero one zero one zero zero one seven. Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two currently zone planned industrial district P I D also known as North Gate Office zoning case number twenty twenty three dash zero five. This is continued from March eleventh of twenty twenty four. What the request, do you want to comment first?
Yeah, I'll just say when they submitted their request for continuance prior to the last meeting, they actually requested a continuance all the way till May. So this is. We're just continuing it on per their original request. The revised materials would be due April sixteenth. And they're aware of that date.
So our next meeting is actually.
May thirteenth.
And four eleven. Right?
Four sixteen.
Four sixteen. Okay.
I got it.
You got it.
I got it.
Go for it.
Mr. Chair, I would move to continue the public hearing for the subject final development plan application known as North Gate Office. Zoning Commission case number twenty twenty three dash zero five until May thirteenth at seven P M. In the Genoa Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development and Zoning Department by April sixteenth, twenty twenty four at four P M. I second this motion.
Seconded. Comments, questions, roll.
Roll call, Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Wester.
Yes.
Mr. Left.
Yes, the continuance motion passes seven oh four. At seven oh four, I will now call to order. Jermaine Holdings, is that correct? Jerman, Jermaine. German, sorry, my apologies. German Holdings LLC requesting approval of a final development plan amendment to increase parking and add an outdoor seating and recreation area. On one point one five acres at six three zero zero Frost Road, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. Pin three one seven three four two zero one zero zero two zero 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 currently zone planned industrial district P I D also known as Campfire Brewing. Zoning case number twenty twenty four dash zero two. Anybody speaking on this behalf, please rise and be sworn in. Public or members sitting at the table, if you're going to speak at all, please rise. Anybody from the public going to speak tonight, raise your right hand. Do you swear that you tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, be seated. The legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on March twenty third, twenty twenty four in the Delaware Gazette, posted at the Genoa Township Hall on March eighteenth, twenty twenty four. An attempt to mail notice of this hearing to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property was also made. The following were marked as exhibits A through H. A, the legal notice, B affidavit of advertisement, C sign in sheet, D application and plans originally received March seventh, twenty twenty four. E fire marshal email dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty four. F, the staff technical review dated April second, twenty twenty four for April nine meeting. G staff memo dated April second, twenty twenty four for April nine meeting. And H, all public comments received between March seventh, twenty twenty four and April ninth of twenty twenty four. Mr. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who are here who haven't been to one of these before, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the memorandum and technical review report for the commission. As well as for the applicant and for the record. Then at which point, then it'll get turned over to the applicant for their presentation. And then, as we said, there's in the statement of policy, public comment, applicant response, then commission questions. Generally is the order we go. Sometimes the commission likes to jump in with some questions while I'm giving my report or the applicant's giving their report. So we'll see how it goes. So. With that said, I will jump right in. So as noted in the legal notice, this is a final development plan amendment request to convert the existing. Structure at sixty three hundred Frost Road, one point one five acres. The building's approximately four thousand three hundred and fourteen square feet. And the Purdy Industrial Park, lot eleven fifty two, if you're curious, into a brewery that serves its beverages to customers onsite in what seems to be a bar like setting. The property is currently zone plain industrial district formerly known as P D three. Improvements include converting an existing outdoor storage area into numerous other operations, including additional outdoor parking and outdoor seating area, a space reserved for a food truck, an outdoor recreational area and a dumpster pad. Little bit of project history, Purdy Industrial Park was recorded in November seventy one. Zoning permits for the building couldn't be located. This is not unusual for buildings from that era. County auditor records indicate it was constructed in seventy three. Zoning for the township is completely overhauled in eighty seven, which resulted in the current zoning designation, the plain industrial district. Although it had a slightly different name back at that time. Zoning permit number W eighty eight twenty three was issued for the sign on June sixth of eighty eight. Final development plan amendment for the property was approved by the Board of Trustees on November fourteenth, two thousand seven, zoning case number two thousand seven dash oh eight. Though this was called an amendment, it does not appear as if there was ever an original final development plan proceeding this application. This plan incorporated the existing conditions of the site into the approved plan as well as the approved, as well as approved several revisions to the site. To allow for at the time, the new, the proposed tenant, which was Ohio Mulch, which I'm sure a lot of us remember, as well as the aforementioned use. According to Delaware County Auditor records, the existing building was renovated in two thousand eight. Certificate of zoning compliance was issued by the Township Development Zoning Office in December of two thousand eight. Zoning permit number two thousand nine dot zero one nine for a new sign was issued on February ninth of two thousand nine. Per county auditor aerial imagery, the telecommunications tower on the site was erected sometimes between two thousand ten and two thousand thirteen. Those zoning permits are on file for this tower as it was likely exempt from looking zoning control such as plan approvals, et cetera, by state law. State law similarly lays out what township zoning can and cannot control as it pertains to. Modifying and improving that tower in the area immediately around it. Zoning permit twenty twenty one two four three was issued for the construction of an accessory building. Which, next to the tower, which was an equipment cabinet, so that we could control with zoning and issued a permit for. Zoning permit twenty twenty two zero six one was issued for a change of use on the property to equipment sales rental and service, including automobiles, trucks and trailers under section thirteen oh four oh two dot. Oh, of the zoning code, this permit was issued to the prior tenant, which was New Cars Doing Business as Rex Auto Parts. Zoning permit twenty twenty four zero two nine was issued on February sixth of this year, authorizing the following change of uses. One, compounding processing packaging packaging food products under section thirteen oh four oh two D of the code. Beverage distributors, manufacturing and bottling plants, section thirteen oh four oh two dot I of the code and restaurant. Under section thirteen oh four dot O two M of the code. And that change of use permit was issued to the applicant here this evening. So I did tell them they could go ahead and because. They didn't necessarily need to amend the plan to move into the site and start their operation, they were issued the change of use permits. The use is already authorized there. So really what we're looking at is not necessarily the, the use. Being on the site, but rather the site modifications they wish to make to the exterior in the parking lot area. So in terms of surroundings of this site, and I'm sure most of us are probably familiar with the Frost Road corridor, but just in case. Property surrounded by industrial zoning of one type or another, all of which are used in a nonresidential manner. To the east is property zone light industrial, which is Delaware County diesel repair. The closest residential property in this direction is plus or minus six hundred and seventy five feet away. To the west is property zone light industrial. Which is next Green Lawn and Tree Care. The closest residential property in this general direction, which would be technically to the northwest, is approximately fourteen hundred square, fourteen hundred feet away. To the north of this property is Frost Road and the property zone plain industrial district, which is home to Delaware County N E M S. Closest residential property in this direction, which is the closest of any of the residential properties is approximately four hundred and forty. Feet away. And to the south of this property is zone plain industrial district, home to Buckeye Gymnastics, as well as light industrial district. Which is a currently undeveloped parcel with a self-storage facility in the works going through the V Z A. The closest residential property in this general direction, which would technically be southeast, it's approximately one thousand and fifty feet. Most property due south of the site is own commercial or industrial, a land use pattern that extends well into Westerville, such as Worthington Industries, Cheryl's Cookies, all of that down that way. Proposal specifics, twenty additional parking spaces would be provided along the eastern edge of the property in the former outdoor storage area. Typical dimensions being ten feet by twenty feet for the spaces with the twenty five foot wide drive aisle. The applicant should be aware that the township does not regulate accessible parking, however, believes that additional accessible space may be required to satisfy ADA requirements. Going forward, the area immediately south of the existing building and east of the cell tower that would remain would be converted into space for a food truck, southeast of the existing building. And an outdoor seating area that is accessible from the existing rear garage door of the building. The seating area would include overhead decorative string lights. Further south of the proposed outdoor seating area would be a proposed outdoor recreation area for outdoor activities such as, but not limited to pickleball, cornhole, basketball, things of that nature. The outdoor seating and recreation areas would be separated from the parking area and drive aisle by planter boxes. A dumpster would be placed north of the existing planting aisle and that is south of the existing. Eight parking spaces at the northern end of the site. I know there was a lot of north and south in there. Existing concrete block walls at the south end of the site would remain. Their future use is unclear and should be clarified. Two additional parking lot lights would be added to supplement to existing parking lot lights on the site. String lighting would be placed around the perimeter of the building as well. This would be considered pedestrian oriented lighting permitted by Article twenty one, section twenty one oh two dot O two dot C of the zoning resolution. The panel of the existing sign would be swapped out to reflect the new business as well. There are no revisions to or expanses of the existing building, or no revisions or expansions to the existing building are proposed. The current singular driveway access to Frost Road would remain and would not be revised or supplemented. The P I D zoning district does not contain open space requirements, so there are no concerns or impacts on that. The proposal does not seek to remove any existing green space. No additional plantings are proposed or required. Stormwater management infrastructure is already in place and would not be revised, as far as I can tell. And the application indicates that the existing side would remain, the panel would be swapped out to reflect the new business, as I already noted. There is one divergence request. It's to section thirteen oh six dot oh one, which requires that activities excluding parking. Be primarily conducted within a completely enclosed building or other appropriate structural element has been requested. So that the areas for the food truck, outdoor seating and outdoor rec areas may be permitted. The applicant justification for the request has been provided in the submitted materials. So going off script here real quick, this is not unlike what we saw. That Grizzly Bird or Galena Brewing, depending on what time you remember hearing that application come through, same general concept, industrial site. Moving in, want to establish the brewery, want to allow some stuff outside, want to have the food truck onsite for the patrons to get food. So obviously. Different layout, different locations, but same general sort of concept like we saw on Chandler. Staff commentary, staff's complete technical review is attached. I'll get to that in a moment. But A R is in needing of address, and I'm sure Mr. Haskins will point out if there was, the stuff was in there and I just missed it. Calculations need to be provided demonstrating the number of parking spaces proposed for the site meter exceed the number of spaces required by the zoning resolution. I remember my discussions with the applicant, that probably wasn't going to be an issue. I think we even crunched the numbers during one of the meetings at one point, so I'm not really concerned about it. We just need to have the figures on the, on the drawing. Numerous provisions to the development text are needed to ensure clarity, consistency and proper enforcement of the document if approved. A lot of that is the learning experience we just had with the prior development plan amendment application we had last month. Sort of taking some of those lessons and applying it here, making sure we're being fair and equitable in how we're viewing these things. Responses to applicable requirements in Article sixteen need to be provided. I can't think of any major concerns I have there, but we do need to have them. Numerous existing features on the site, including previously approved landscaping, need to be included and or labeled on the site plan. Again, that's more of a housekeeping item. The existing perimeter fences and gate on the property need to be shown on the plans and the fate of each respective item needs to be clarified. Site plan also needs to be revised to better distinguish between actual existing features such as fencing and areas of the property being designated for certain activities, such as the outdoor seating and rec areas. Typical design details for the proposed planter boxes and string lights should be provided. The sign detail provided does not match the sign that exists on the site and needs to be updated. We do have a copy of that permit that shows the sign that's actually there that we can provide. To assist with that. Staff is also recommending the following in the technical review, that, one, that the development text be revised to address the matters of speakers, amplifiers, microphones, stereos, televisions, screens, projectors, et cetera. In response to section thirteen oh six oh two to address potential noise concerns, even though this is still largely a resident or industrial area, obviously sound travels. Such revisions should be realistic, truly reflective of the applicant's desires and keep in mind that the development will be subject to applicable provisions of the township's noise resolution. Enforced by the police department regardless of what the development text says. So. This is one of those instances where, you know, township noise regulations under revised code statute are pretty limited in what we can restrict. But anything having a certain liquor permits, alcohol permits. Can be regulated under noise ordinance as permitted by statute under Ohio law, which the township noise statute reflects. So a lot of the noise concerns will generally fall under the provisions of the noise ordinance enforced by the police department, but. Still probably wouldn't hurt to have some of those provisions sort of nailed down in the zoning if we can. Two, that the applicant clarifies that the submitted development text supplements the old development text that is being revised, so it's not to lose prior information divergences, et cetera. Three, that no divergences from the prior approval be struck unless the applicant truly wishes to rescind their approval and no longer have the right to them. Diverge that is no longer applicable or moot does not necessarily need to be deleted from the text. Four, that the applicant clarify that the hours listed in the development texts are not binding and subject to change. That way I'm not getting calls that their text says they close at nine, but then they closed at nine oh five and people want me to drive out there at nine, ten o'clock at night to see if they're still open. It's just not very practical from an enforcement standpoint. Five, a zoning chart be provided on the site plan drawing to demonstrate compliance with core zoning requirements such as setbacks, lot coverage, building height, parking count, just sort of a one stop shop, easier to find that information. I always like to see that. Six, remove all the sheet index from the drawing as in applies that there should be more drawings in the packet. There may be more drawings in that packet that probably go to other reviewers of the part of the building permit, but I wouldn't want someone to get that drawing and think that they don't have all of the drawings. Revisions to the final development plan are limited to those requested herein unless otherwise approved by the zoning inspector under the authority provided by Article twenty seven, section twenty seven ten oh one. Approval of the amendment would also be subject to time limits outlined in twenty seven twelve dot nineteen of the resolution, which is currently three years from date of approval. If this application is approved, the applicant will have to apply for and obtain zoning permit for the changes that would be approved. That's the memorandum, jumping into the technical review. And I'm not going to go through every item in this list because a lot of it is pretty much cleanup stuff. So there's, there's stuff in. Just the way the text is presented, information we need to have in the executive summary regarding. Just a lot of it's structural and actually very similar to what we just asked G M Marcos to do. Provide us the history. List the zoning permits, a lot of, a lot of information I just provided, so they can basically lift that on my reports. Again, clarification, so that the site already has development text approved for it. They went through and struck, struck it through, which is good because that tells me they read it, but. We also need to clarify that their text is supplementing the old text, and if that's not the case, any relevant information for the old text needs to come into the new text. Because it's just the first revision, I think I'm okay keeping it sort of as structured it is and doing it as a supplement, but obviously the commission will have the final say on how they want to see that. Again, prior site improvements, getting that all in the drawing and incorporated, just so, again, we're trying to. I don't want to call them mistakes, but some of the missteps we had that created some complications for the G M Marcos application, trying to avoid some of those missteps. So we don't end up in the same boat with any of these other applications that come through to amend plans. And again, making sure all the divergence, that the wording of the text is clear that all the prior issues divergences remain in effect. So there's some existing features we just want to see labeled on the drawing, same, I already talked about the landscape plantings that are already there, getting that on there. Revising the Article thirteen review development text, there's, and most of it's just. I'm not going to go through all of this unless you have a specific question, but a lot of it's just cleanup. Of getting things to read exactly how we need it to read for the sake of clarity, for the sake of enforcement. I already talked about, we need text speaking to Article sixteen. Again, a lot of the revisions to Article eighteen is just about clarity and enforcement. Huge compliance concerns there because they're just basically swapping out the panel on the sign. Again, same stories with Articles nineteen, twenty one, twenty seven, just mostly cleaning up the text to get it. More descriptive, clear, clear, just all around, just. Having that there, you know, the theory we always try to tell people is, you know, we always, we always sort of view it as like when we were in school, you know, your teacher always told you. I should be able to read this entire document and fully understand what's going on here without having any other context surrounding it. So. That's the theory we take because very much, I doubt willing to be in a situation where this would end up in court, but that is exactly the kind of approach the judge is going to take. All they're going to get is the record we create for them. So that's, that's why it's just so important. And I know a lot of people think I'm being persnickety when I have all these comments, but that's why we do it the way we do it, because we just want to make sure we're not leaving loopholes. That either are injurious to the applicant or make life difficult from an enforcement angle. So. Again, I know it seems like I'm being difficult, but that's, that's why we do all these things. Again, clarification, even, you know, identifying in the old development text, strike through equals deletion or this color or underline equals addition. And again, you know, again, I'm not going to read through all of this because I either covered it in the memorandum or it's really development text cleanup stuff. And if the commission has a. Specific question on any of these. I'll be happy to speak in greater depth to them, but for the sake of expediency, I think I'm gonna. Wrap up my presentation here, turn it over back to Mr. Chairman so we can get the applicant's presentation.
Mr. Schaefer, if you guys could do me a favor, push the buttons so that it turns to green and then need a name and an address and then go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. My name is Dan Haskins, seven two seven eight Pueblo Court, Westerville, Ohio, four three oh eight two.
My name is Roland Reed and I live at three three seven Leighton Court in Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two.
Eric Hatton, live at seven two eight three Pueblo Court, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two.
My name is Brett Hauser, live at sixty one oh three Grisham Street in Westerville, four three oh eight two.
Thank you.
So we are Campfire Brewing. As, you know, we were off record talking, we are four dads that are local to Westerville. Three of us over here, we live right next to each other, you know, two, two on Pueblo Court and Brett right around the corner. And, you know, we started home brewing together over five years ago. And, you know, kind of, it was a binding experience between all of us because we'd all kind of moved in around the same time. But, so we all started brewing casually on weekends. And the pandemic hit and we kind of use brewing as a bit of a way to keep our sanity. And have outdoor activities to do once we kind of, you know, decided that we were all going to force our, you know, families together as being part of our own little bubble. Which was kind of brought about by our kids, incidentally, but we ended up picking up our activities during the pandemic. So we would brew, you know, during the days and at the night times, we would, we would get together on my back patio or Brett's back patio and when we would get around the campfire. And we would drink the same stuff that we were brewing, you know, the previous couple of weeks. It was a great bonding experience and kind of that mentality is an idea of bonding and community is what we kind of want to bring to. Campfire Brewing at this location of Frost Road, kind of be that community campfire for everybody to come around, hang out, enjoy a good beer, share some stories. And just be kind of a new, new pillar for the community to, to, for people to gather and enjoy. Enjoy the beer that we, we love creating, which we love to share as well. So. You know, it's kind of the long story short, but that's kind of who we are. And I don't, if there's anything else that really need to add beyond that, so.
Anything specific to what Mr. Schaefer talked about and where we are from the technical review and?
No.
Yeah, he gave us enough time that we've, we've been able to kind of go through and like, you know, he was going through everything line by line. We've done a similar thing and at this point, we don't, I don't have anything that I've needed to go back and ask Joe about. Everything's pretty, pretty cut and dry as far as what he wants to see, how he wants to see it. You know, I think we, you know, we've had multiple meetings with him already to try to make sure we were on the same page as what he wanted to see, you know, try to. Make all of this as easy as possible and everybody, you know, like Joe said, that you guys are, have not had those meetings with us, you know, we've already kind of introduced ourselves with Joe, but. Putting everything on paper, like he says, the way that he wants to see it, the way you guys want to see it, clear and concise and. and concise, and, you know, not kind of cornering ourselves into any particular thing, you know, I feel like to say, you know, put on paper that we don't necessarily want to be helped to, so.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else wants to talk about before we?
What questions do you guys have?
Yeah. We're going to get to that.
Okay.
All right, at this point, we'll go to public comment, five minutes, so anybody from the public? Come on once, anybody?
You.
Twice? Public comment's closed. Okay.
Let's start. So will you have a campfire here? I don't see it called out.
Yeah, we do not have any called out, but yeah, we intend to have some propane campfires outside that we'll have the chairs around and such, so. Permanent feature, but something similar to a, you know, propane fire, campfire in the proposed seating area.
Oh, right in here?
Yeah, 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 so we'll have tables out there as well with umbrellas and...
Is that different than the planters? You know, the planters were asking for specific details of as a sort of permanent object. Are we considering, is this more of a piece of furniture that can be relocated like I have on my back deck? Or is this mason rain that's built in?
No, it'd be more movable. Like, we really want this outside area to be much more fluid and kind of, you know, adaptable. You know, even really the planters, while we envision them, and we'll, you know, present that to you guys as well, as being on casters, but, you know, lockable casters that we can move, you know, the ones that are delineating the space between the drive aisle and the, you know, the seating area and the recreational area, those almost permanent, you know, more or less be permanently affixed there, but, you know, and using them to kind of delineate the spaces of where the seating area is, is kind of, you know, the dynamic aspect of how we want to do it, because if, you know, we're discovering that we have this huge area, you know, out laid for people to sit in, that we're not getting as many people and it's just kind of being unused, you know, we'll bring it in and make it more intimate so that it doesn't feel like you're out in this open space, and it's, you know, it's an open concrete lot right now, so we don't want it to feel like an open concrete lot. And by being adaptable, it just kind of, you know, allows us that flexibility to be able to respond and react to our customers and what they're giving us feedback on as well, so.
So I had some difficulties with the plan, it's like kind of basic at the moment.
Yes.
The measurements are not great, like it's, or missing, like some measurements, like from Frost Road to the parking lot, I don't know what the dimension of that is. Like in your plan, for instance, there is also lighting fixtures where the parking spaces are, like they cannot impede in the parking spaces, so you have to move that up somehow. Like, how, what are these dimensions? Like, it's lacking a lot of dimensions for me.
Sure.
Also, like, when you draw, like a measurement line, you draw it in the same type of line as a normal drawn line, it's the same thickness, the same color, so it's kind of hard to sometimes to see what, which is like an actual drawn line of a building or parking space or something, so I would try to change that somehow. It's just hard to read, in my opinion. And then, like, for the outdoor seating area, so you define all these spaces and you define the space for the recreational area, I mean, it's a box, but what is it? Like, is it asphalt? Is there going to be just a line drawn on the floor and that's it? Or is it going to be a different material? Are you going to cut out to asphalt? Is it going to be grass? Is there going to be something else material-wise? Like, what will it be?
So right now, that whole area in there, and yeah, we can make this more clear, and it goes just along with what Joe says with everything else that we, you know, we're kind of pointed out to, and it's more about clarifying and explaining what everything is to somebody who doesn't know the site.
Yeah.
And I understand that, you know, maybe we, some of the stuff that we presented kind of takes for granted that you already know the site that we're starting from, kind of, like we've had, you know, direct communication with Joe on, but that's stuff we can clean up and we can provide that information.
But what would be the intention for the underground of that area?
It'll stay concrete.
It's all concrete right now.
It's all concrete right now, stay concrete, yeah.
Okay, and how would, like, how do you define that area? It's going to be painted, is it, like, I mean, how do you know where to, I don't know, it just seems weird that it's all going to be one concrete area to me.
It's just backyard games, you know, it's cornhole, it's can jam, so like those courts are kind of defined by where the two different, you know, cornhole boards or cans are placed. You know, we don't, we're not, we're not striping out any specific, you know, square or, you know, something for kids, like, it's not, like I was mentioning earlier, we really want this to be very, yeah, very flexible, that we can use it however we want. So that is actually kind of something that, you know, Joe advised us to do so because we didn't want to be tied down to a specific design that you guys would expect and be like, you know, if we changed our minds or people weren't using this particular court or something that we put on pavement or were fully committed to, you know, then do we have to come back and justify why we're changing the plans, just because of the way that our patrons were...
Well, I know, but I mean, you could do some kind of turf grass or something, I mean, that's movable, or, I mean, it's not temporary, but it's something different material-wise than just having this whole surface of blacktop.
Yeah, is that something that would have to be specified at this point?
Not per se, I just was wondering, because you draw a box, so for me, if you draw a box, I think it's something different, like...
So would you rather us remove the box and just say that it's a broken, flexible area?
I mean, yeah, I mean, there is no box because it's going to be asphalt, so you probably should draw it like that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to the concept, I think, the concept is a decent concept, but in, from a zoning commission member perspective, what I'm concerned about is that the plan is squishy in terms of, you know, you're talking about, well, it's changeable, it's modifiable based on customer response, things like that, but zoning's not squishy. And so, you know, we have to be able to review a plan that's got some guardrails to, some firm guardrails to it, and there can, I think, be some latitude within those guardrails, but ultimately, there has to be something there that we can look at on paper and compare to the, well, actually, Joe and his staff, take what's on paper in the plan and compare it to what's going on at the site and say, yes, these two match, or no, these two don't match, and we've got a concern if they don't match. You know, arguably, if the pickleball, basketball, whatever, bocce ball doesn't work out, does that mean we're adding another twenty parking spaces? Because if that's the case, that changes our, well, I'll speak for myself, I mean, that kind of changes my perspective of how much use is there going to be, or load of people coming into and out of the site and things like that. Again, I, and I'm not opposed to the divergence or the variance, but I'd like to see some more firm detail to the plan as to what this is going to be, and I mean, that's kind of where I stand right now.
If we were to add more parking spaces, I think we've built this with the understanding that if we were going to place anything more permanent, we would ask the zoning commission for permission, so, for example, striking off more parking would definitely be something that we come to the zoning commission and say, hey, we are adding more parking spaces, we are, we're putting in something permanent, we are putting in a structure. At the moment, we wanted to keep the plan flexible just because, again, we want to be cognizant to our consumers and to our own plans and budget and everything else, so.
Yeah, so I wouldn't mind just following on the last comment from, there's a couple things at play here, and I think this is why the comment is made out. One, there's a technical review, which I would imagine all of us on the commission agree with those, that's paperwork stuff, and that needs to just get undocumented, you guys understand that. That what we're really talking about today is the divergence, which, should we be allowed to have outdoor recreational use as part of this process or not, that's the divergence that we're discussing, and the challenge is, it's hard to discuss that without understanding the full scope of it. Now, one possible solution is, and I'm not saying, you know, one way or another, the commission might approve it one way or another, again, I am for the general concept, but you have designated, you know, very clearly with lines on a drawing, a proposed seating area, which I too was confused at first, and after digging up, I figured, I think you're just leaving it concrete. And then you have to the right of that, or I guess that would be the south, a very clear sixty-by-ninety-foot designated area, and then the other stuff is just like whatever it is. So is there a possibility that you could just highlight that whole area to the west of the new planter box bollard you're putting in and just calling that proposed seating and gaming area? That would allow you to be more flexible? Is there anything that we would need to know about that zone in between the proposed seating and this recreation area? Why that wasn't ever part of the plan? That might be one way to do it, is this is just one big flexible area, we're going to shift it based on how many people are here, how many events we're having, so on and so forth. That, I think, doesn't limit you as much, but also, I think, provides a little bit of clarity for us, hey, your parking's going to be over there, and the other stuff's going to be over here.
I appreciate that.
I like that a lot, so, yeah, I think that's great, it's a great way to kind of look at it, because it was hard for us to really delineate too, like, you know, how do we designate exactly what, because like, it's hard enough to try to get this idea onto paper, so.
Just getting, you know, on the same page as you guys, too.
Without limiting, you know, we've got ideas and plans, but as much of it as we can keep flexible in public record is the idea. So I guess my question to the commission then is, what other types of things would influence your decision if, what type of things would influence your decision on whether or not it can be, it can be used? So what if we put ninety picnic tables out there, which would imply six times ninety consumers? Would that be an issue for you? Or would that be, or would that change your thinking? Or what type of factors are you considering on whether...
If you put ninety picnic tables out, that's a lot, that's a lot of people, so that means it's a lot more parking spaces than what you have out there. So there's that.
Yeah, that was a hyperbole that I was just...
Yeah, I understand, no, I think it's worth you figuring out how much seating you can actually get and what actually it means from a parking perspective to show the calculation. So, I mean, I know in your text you said it's thirty, you only need thirty, but you've got thirty-one slots drawn, right? So that's there. Are you doing anything in the back with those massive concrete bins?
So the bays, yeah, the bays, we kind of have an idea. We actually kind of tested it a couple of weeks ago. The family-friendly aspect of it, we anticipate having like a chalk and paint area for them back there, because there's a, you know, direct line of sight out there, they can yell and scream, and it's generally not too disruptive, because you're far enough away, but you can hear if they need you. So, yeah, those are all cleaned out now, but, yeah, having the kids out there, and that's also, you know, a way to use those planters to delineate those areas, is, you know, keep the traffic away from those bays as well, so.
Is any seating going inside the building? Any seating going inside the building?
Yes.
Yes, okay. How much seating?
Sixty. Yeah, we're planning for, I think, a max of sixty-four, is what we could conceivably...
Plus outside, then? Okay, and then food truck is the only food? Are you going to have prep stations inside or storage or anything else?
And besides, you know, cutting of limes or oranges is the only food prep?
Yeah, we're not doing food prep.
Food truck is self-powered only, are you giving them a hookup? Are you giving them a natural gas hookup? Are you doing anything exterior to feed food trucks?
It's self-powered only.
Self-powered only. Where's your line going to be? Have you said it's going to be inside the bollard or is it going to be in the parking lot area?
It will be inside, so it'll be outside the drive aisle, so you're keeping that twenty-five-foot drive aisle.
Inside the proposed seating area is where you're going to have people line up.
Right.
I would also put a measurement on that, I mean, just what is that area?
Think of it, yeah, just think about, don't stuff tables, you've got people standing there.
I have a food truck, I have a food trailer, I cannot park in there, I know that for sure. Like, my truck cannot fit in there.
I'm just saying, like...
It would be good to have an idea.
Band outside music area?
Potentially on special nights.
Yeah.
But nothing permanent, nothing, we're not putting in a stage that'll be permanent or anything.
Exterior speakers getting in the building?
Yes, and that's part of the feedback from the technical review is what is the amperage on that, what is the, and we should have an answer to you for that by the end of next week.
On the drawing, the hatch mark around the outside, plus the hatch mark here, I'm thinking that's fencing. So are you fencing the outside of the building? Or is that supposed to be sidewalk?
I think it's for ass. The hatching there around the building, that's a landscape area.
The same as hatch is up by, in front of the...
Grass, I think, yeah.
Yeah, there's...
So is that, this is a fence, right?
Yes.
The dumpster is fenced, but you've got, so is it different hatching?
No, they're both, they're both landscape area.
There's a bush or something there?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the only screening?
Yeah, it's screening for the dumpster.
So there's no actual fence in place?
There is a fence there as well, there's a gate which is not shown on here as well, which we are going to...
But the gate is supposed to be removed.
Yeah, I think you also just need to draw that out, and if you make that, like, if you use the hatch for your landscape, you need to do it in front, too. I wouldn't do the hatch, I'm not a big fan of the hatch, but, because it's just like too busy, you need to have, like, draw, do an actual plan of the plans that are there, in my opinion, too, like, you have to draw out the original situation if you're going to change something.
Sure.
Those are still referred to in the Ohio...
Yeah, I know, but I mean, is it, like, that's what they planted? Is it still like that today? I don't know, I'm not going to go count them, I mean...
It is actually, but yeah.
I'm just, I mean, for us, it's just like, we cannot just go there and go look ourselves. This is a question for Joe. For the landscaping, according to thirteen oh three oh six of the codes, the impervious surface can only be seventy-five percent? Is that like, are they, is that already in place or will they have to still apply for this again?
We can't make them, if it's already not compliant, say they're over the seventy-five, we can't make them retroactively make the site compliant. So that's why, like, on even the measurements of the front setbacks of the parking lot, they should be there, but I didn't look at them because they're not moving the parking lot closer, so it is what it is. Sort of, that's the same with the impervious coverage. We already know it is what it is, it's already sort of been accepted that way when they did the final development plan for Ohio Mulch all those years ago, so, no, I wouldn't require them to somehow find a way, I mean, it'd be great if they could get more impervious surface on the site, but no, there's no way for zoning to like require them to do that.
Would it be possible to compensate that with like big plant, like, I know you have the planters, but like bigger planters, like table size, like, or like bins or something with plants? Maybe you can make your area more defined also by something like that?
Yeah.
Probably build that yourself, I mean, it would compensate a little bit with not having that older landscaping.
Yeah, I think that goes along with us not wanting to make it feel like a big open concrete parking lot, and so, yeah, we want to try to green the space up as much as we can.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was because you guys were sitting in the driveway and you're just like used to having concrete around while you're driving?
Yeah.
Got us figured out.
Yeah.
About the...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, you can, you can go, sorry.
The dumpster. And I don't know what your intentions are with all of those bays in the back, but would it make more sense to put the dumpster in the back where you've already got the bays and...
I do think I mentioned that in one of the meetings, that whether or not the truck's going to be able to service it in that location. Well, I mean, in the side location, so being in the back, because it might be able to drive straight in, get it, dump it over, so I had that thought as well, Mr. Welch.
Yeah, you have a twenty-five-foot wide drive aisle. I understand that that's, I think, where the existing dumpster was, that is an odd location for me for a dumpster. One of the reasons you're having staff cross back and forth across that road to take the trash out, it's just danger for your employees there. Two, it's, I don't know exactly where your entrance is going to be, the building, but it seems to be very prominently featured as you go out the front door to the building. Yes, you know, shifting that is going to cost a little bit of money, but it looks like you're proposing to stripe those to the south of where that proposed dumpster is anyway, so there's no reason why you might not shift that back somewhere else.
I guess I was curious, what's happening on the southern end of that building, sort of where that notch is, like, but you didn't really have it programmed, is anything on the drawing? Is, with the, because I think you have to leave a drive area open for the utility truck to get to the tower, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but if you look, I'm sorry, not south end, west, I got my directions. So, but if you look, I'm sorry, not south end, west, I got my directions mixed up. Like, that, I, you didn't have it programmed, is anything on the drawing? I don't know if the truck could make that swing and pull down basically what's an alley on that side of the building, it would be sort of secluded there. Just, I'm spitballing here, but.
But then you're driving right through the beer garden, right, right through the seating and everything.
That's why, between the seating area and the rec area, you had a space. I assume that was because they have to still be able to get in to maintain that tower.
Just, yeah, directly in front of it, so it's like that same offset from the back of the building south.
So, so between that seating area and the rec area, there's, now you got the planter boxes there. I'm sorry, I'm gonna go up to the drawings, so, just been doing this a lot lately. So, I assumed that these, I know you have the planter boxes here, but they were gonna have to get, for the service, this cell tower, I know they're probably not back there terribly frequently, but they would have to, they're gonna have to get back through there. I can't imagine they're gonna be happy with you totally blocking access off. So, I figured, well, if you're gonna have to leave that open for them to do that, would the dump truck, because it's probably gonna be coming through when there aren't people back here by and large, would they be able to come back here and come down this way and get there? I don't know how wide this is.
The only area that we can't have anything permanently affixed to the ground for that cell tower, our area, is directly to the east. It's, this is the easement that we are not allowed to be in. So this is the only, like, the, like, the extra building that goes with it, that's seated inside with exterior, you know, ingress egress to their facilities inside right there, it's outside the building. But this is the only area we're not allowed to put anything for this cell tower.
What's that?
Is that easement showing anywhere?
It, not on the site plan, because it's probably an eas, like a private easement that they have with that carrier.
It's gotta be recorded.
Yeah, I would think so, probably, imagine it is with the county, we wouldn't have it.
Can I make a suggestion that that be included with the final development plan as a copy of that easement, so that?
Just for, as a reference purpose, to know it's there?
Reference purpose, so that.
So on the alternative, the dumpster probably could, I think, Mr. Welch, you were talking about in that sort of southern end of the site, if one of those concrete bays went away, then the truck could just pull straight forward, down, get it, then they'd have to back up a ways, but they're sort of used to doing that, so.
Yeah, that was, that was something we considered as well. Other than the fact that it's quite a ways back to the back of the lot for us.
Oh, that's right, I remember, we talked about that now, because that's a long way for the, for the staff to have to walk to take the, that's right, that's why we talked about that.
Crossing the, you know, the drive aisle, or you're walking all the way back to the back, yeah, it's not ideal, but.
It makes them really nice wheelie dumpsters.
Do they?
Get our steps in, right?
Yeah.
There's some nice big wheels.
Yeah.
Really, really well.
So what if we could do that?
So what about loading, like, what do you guys do when, like, you have to load your beer and bring it, I don't know, to stores? Like, where do you, where's your loading area gonna be?
Everything's gonna be on-site, so we're not doing any distribution, so we're not gonna be loading up a truck. We'll bring in material, and that exactly has not been determined how we're bringing it all in. Well, right, but like unloading it. The truck, I.
Probably where the food, I mean.
In location.
Yeah, where the food truck is, we unload it there and take it in.
Yeah, and we'll put it on a pallet.
All bags on pallet, or super sacks?
Just draw these entries of that building also a little bit better, because it's not super clear what is a door, what's not a door?
Yep, what's the gate?
I just have a few final comments on it. There were many different light fixtures in the development plan text. Is one existing, is one proposed?
Yeah, there's two existing, but we're likely going to amend that, because, well, I don't, we haven't figured out how to turn them on yet, but to know if they actually work, but they also don't necessarily abide by the code now, so.
Just gonna replace some?
We're gonna have updated, updated literature for the fixtures.
Saw, it looks like some goose neck, kind of sconce fixtures, are they gonna be on the side of the building?
Yeah, so, yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah, the lighting in the parking lot is gonna be able to be set behind the, behind the fence. There's a five-foot, I guess, buffer behind the fence on the property lines that we can set the poles behind, and not inhibit any parking spaces, like was, we mentioned earlier. And then we will have lighting around the building, both decorative and, I think, flood lighting as well, which we need to show on the, on the drawing as well, so, we'll make sure to detail that for the, for the next.
Just put them on the plan, okay?
And then, this is more of a philosophical comment. I believe somewhere in your paper, where you talked about the importance of, like, you know, the community and providing an easily accessible area for families to come from all the great residences. You'd mentioned, I think, the bike and pedestrian paths. Is there any plan to connect this to the bike and pedestrian paths, literally, or is it just, we're kind of close to one?
We're kind of close to one, yeah.
I wish we could.
I know, yeah, we turned that up with Joe. Yeah, there's no sidewalks or path back to our establishment, but it's like, what, five hundred? Two hundred yards, three hundred yards or something?
It's just outside the five hundred.
Yeah, right, yes.
Okay. I do have actually one final comment, I'm sorry. We talk a lot about the cell tower, the access to the cell tower, the food truck loading area. I'm guessing, because Joe hasn't flagged it, there isn't any requirement for fencing for the food truck area. The city Columbus is different, you have to actually have different fences for that area. But I'm thinking about the cell tower, I can't imagine the fence for that is pretty to look at. Is there any plans to put a decorative fence in front of that? Is the cell tower people okay with that? And if so, can we get that in the drawing?
That is definitely something we want to do. We just had not come up with the perfect idea yet, because, yes, you're right, the fence is very ugly. It's got barbed wire on it and everything. So, yes, we do want to put a visual barrier, which we are allowed to do by the terms of the lease. It just obviously can't be anything permanent, so maybe not a fence, but more of a nice, a visual green barrier, something to that effect.
And skid bins that you can hold.
Right, exactly, same.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say, we've done graffiti walls in the past, you could have like a sliding graffiti wall, but you have this area for paint chalks, that makes sense, but, yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
That's kind of cool, too, but I really like that.
Not contingent upon.
One extra question about the cell tower, so there is an accessory building, where is that exactly?
It's inside the building, so it's in the.
So can you also, maybe, maybe you should also just put it on the plan?
We can do that, too, yeah, it's in the southeast corner of the building, so.
It's not actually a standalone building, right? It's, it's.
Part of the building.
It's an interior space devoted just to the.
This size?
No, accessory building would be outside.
The big garage door is on the back here, it's just small enough to be able to get it in there. They slid it in, I guess.
No, but do they, do they service from the outside?
Yeah, that's where these doors are here.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, so there's no, there's gonna be no access to it. Now, there is ventilation on the back of it, on this side, that will provide a door to it, but it has, has to have the exterior ventilation to it as well, so this will all kind of essentially be its own building apart from what we're doing, so.
Is there a backup generator for that side? Where's the generator?
Inside there. You can imagine, it's pretty loud.
Well, that's why it's ventilated and separate.
Well, yeah, but. Are there gonna be serving food inside there?
Next to it, outside.
Well, the food, the drink will be inside, the food will be outside. That'll be, obviously, the health district will have to sign off on what they're doing in here, the building department, the building codes, so.
The generator would kick on with no electricity, so we wouldn't be running, we wouldn't be open with no electricity at times, so.
Does that generator?
It runs once a week, and then there'll be a load test, and there'll be a bunch of other things that go on. Those, hopefully, schedule that with you, and make the weekly runtime after hours.
Yeah.
Is it diesel, or is it natural gas?
Natural gas.
Will this area have, like, sunshades?
Starting with umbrellas at the tables. We have ideas of doing sunshades, but we don't have any, any plans for them right now. It's just kind of an idea at this point, but we're, the plan is to start with umbrellas at the tables.
Yeah, and again, any, any sort of like, you know, more permanent type fixture or sunshade, we expect to come back to the zoning board to get approved.
About outdoor restrooms, is everything gonna be, somebody go to the bathroom inside, or?
Yeah, it's inside, all inside. The, yeah, the only potential time we could do that is like, we just talked with our architect today, and that we have plans for inside to have two, well, men and women's with two different stalls in each one. And he said to us that we can accommodate up to a hundred and fifty people, so it's almost twice what we expect for the inside. So, we don't need to go any more than what we have planned at this point. If we have more than a hundred and fifty people, we would entertain doing something like that, but that's.
Nothing outside, though?
I'm sorry?
Nothing outside?
Nothing for purposes.
Okay.
But I think, though, to my earlier point, I think, like you mentioned, the tables and umbrellas, those are things that need to be included on plan so that we know, and ultimately Joe knows, what's supposed to be out there.
Yeah, generally, what we've told the applicants is, you know, we don't expect you to hard commit to the exact design of the table, the exact umbrella, but, you know.
No, but.
For illustrative purposes, you know, here's generally what we're thinking kind of thing. Especially when you get into the stuff that's not permanent, we don't usually get as technical with. Obviously, if they were building permanent seating out there, or any permanent structures out there, we'd be more concerned. But I guess, sort of, my understanding was, yeah, it'd be tables, chairs, sort of that backyard environment, lawn chairs, and, you know, kind of thing, so. Very easy to move, fold it up, put it away, kind of stuff. So I think that's where they were coming at with a little bit of the flexibility was from that angle of it. But I can understand and appreciate the commission wanting a little bit more information and understanding of, at least generally, what can staff and the commission expect if we were to go by there, you know, what, what's it generally gonna look like, where are we generally gonna encounter, kind of thing? So, you know, I did tell them to try to keep it, you know, higher level in terms of some of those things. You know, we didn't need an exhaustive list of every game they might play in their recreational area, we just needed some examples, so we know, okay, yeah, we all know sort of what they're talking about, backyard games essentially, same with the seating. But, yeah, if there's certain, you know, general items the commission wants to see, it sounds like the applicant's willing to do that for you.
Yeah, so, so back to the sort of earlier proposed change, where we kind of change it more to one big box that says general, these are the general things we will do within, with there. We can provide some cut sheets for the types of tables, the types of umbrellas, you know, like, but not limited to those things, the types of backyard games. We've already got a lot of that, honestly, planned in other plans, just not in the public record one. It, do you, do you need a range of occupants, or a range of people perhaps? Is that, is that something that seems to be a sticking point?
Yeah, that'll be important, just from a parking perspective, to make sure we're in a good spot, because if you come back with too much, then we're gonna start talking about what's, what happens when you have overflow, and you get some grass, and then all of a sudden, there's Frost Road, and what are the regulations, and then we gotta worry about fire department. So it's gonna limit your overall capacity. So if all of a sudden you throw, you know, forty picnic tables out there, we'll have to lose your parking number way out of order, so. Because if you're gonna have indoor seating and outdoor seating at the same time, now we're way past that, so we gotta, we've got a little bit of concern.
In the same vein, I guess, you know, sometimes these types of spaces end up becoming, you know, leagues form and whatnot. You know, Gia Marcos has the bocce thing that they do, and you start getting teams showing up, and then people watching the teams, and that can draw some additional people there who weren't necessarily just there for the core business.
We just need to talk about it and see where your mind is there, and let's draw it and see where we're at.
Sure.
Fair.
Any other comments for them to consider?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Motion.
So, I guess the question is, when do you want to come back?
Yeah.
Because any revised materials for the May meeting would be due April sixteenth, so that, I mean, that only gives you a week.
Yeah, we've actually already started, Joe sent these to us last week, but, yeah, well, I think we should be able to hit the mark in a week. There's not that much that we really need to change. I mean, it's really just annotating and notating and making sure that everything is clear as possible.
And again, we do have a lot of this also sort of off to the side, some of the things that you were already talking about, so we can, we can adjust as necessary.
Also change the text a little bit, because it's kind of confusing, because it's the old text, and some, like, the PID is not mentioned, like, it's still the old terms and stuff, like some, you can make it your own text, it's better that way, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, and I met with them and discussed how to approach this before we went through what we went through with Gia Marcos. So.
Thank you.
So what we're learning, so what happened with Gia Marcos is they amended the plan numerous times over twelve years, and we had like, multiple iterations of just supplemental amendments to the text, and it was becoming unwieldy for them, as well as us, to understand what was what and keeping track of it. So originally, I didn't want to tell you, take all the old text and put it into the brand new text, because theoretically, with amendment, you can't just, with an amendment, you can't just strike through and just change the stuff that we're changing, but also, it's a little bit of a challenge, because that existing text was written over fifteen years ago, under a totally different version of the code. So that's some of the challenges we're having with some of these plans that people are mending, is the structure of the zoning has changed so much that they're sometimes having to, so it might be easier in some instances to just take the information out of the old text, copy it, and put it into the new text, and then basically just.
So, you're talking the actual.
Yeah, the development text, the text, the writings.
Yeah, and where we're adding our own comments, like acknowledged, or doing this and this.
Yeah, so.
I got you.
They, they did do what I initially told them to do, but we've, relatively recently, I think, there's been sort of an evolution in thought of the commission on how we want to see some of these go forward. Requires a little more work on the applicant's part, and I'm happy to sit down and help you sort of understand that, go through that. That's what I've been doing with applicants lately on some of that stuff. And I know we already did that once, but now it was sort of this newer direction we're heading, you know. I don't think it should be too bad, because the existing text is too voluminous, so a lot of it will probably just be copying and then pasting it into the relevant section of the new text. Okay. If you want to have a call or something, we can set something up.
Yeah, I think I know, yeah, I won't wait till the last minute.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll get to something.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to continue the public hearing for the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application, known as Zoning Commission Case Number twenty twenty-four dash zero-two until May thirteenth at seven PM in the Genoa Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development and Zoning Department by April sixteenth at four PM, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at four PM.
My second.
Comments, questions?
Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Berner.
Yes.
Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Wester.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, and that concludes this portion of eight oh four. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
Get in touch with me if you want to go through some things.
All right, Joe.
Who do you want to do first?
Joe.
Uh, we're on to zoning resolution amendment, correct?
Resolution?
Oh, are we doing, gonna do that today, the nomination of, yeah? I don't know, it's kind of weird, you know, with Joe not being here. Would we postpone it until they actually, like, nominated an actual new member, or?
Oh, the election of officers, yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's up to you. I mean, what you could do is just vote to, I'm not telling what to, you could vote to retain and then revisit the issue after someone's appointed, or you could just vote to retain and just know that person won't have a say on it. The latter is historically how it's been handled, but that's not necessarily the way you have to handle it.
Yeah, but we're probably sixty days out before we appoint somebody.
Yeah, because the commission, I mean, we just got the notice today. That means the commis, or, not the commission, the trustees won't officially recognize, accept it, you know, retroactively, until their may, their mating in May, which is the first Thursday in May. At that point, I've been asked, because we, we had a resignation on the BZA two recently, so, I've been asked for the BZA one to go through and contact all the individuals who weren't appointed to BZA or ZC, and ask them. and ask them, hey, are you still interested in being considered? We've had some positions open up, and give that feedback back to the trustees. At which point, they're gonna determine, do they wanna interview people again? Do they wanna put under the call out? Do they just wanna go ahead and appoint somebody? Do they have someone in mind? There's, there's really no statutory process for how they do these appointments. It's just, I mean, literally, they could sit in the room and point to someone in the audience and say, you've been appointed to the zoning commission. That's, they don't do that, obviously, but they, that's how informal it really could be in terms of appointing people. So, it'll be up to the trustees to just determine how they're feeling about it and what direction they wanna take it. So, yeah, I could, they could call a special meeting in two days and say, hey, we actually know who we wanna appoint, we're gonna do it. That's not likely to happen, so, yeah, I would say it's, it's probably gonna be a few weeks at least. I'll be surprised if we have someone by your May meeting. Not shocked, but surprised.
I personally feel like we should wait. I mean, maybe they will appoint someone of, of our, um, like Ryan, I mean, maybe, maybe they will find one doing an alternate, I don't know. But I'd rather have the trustees decide first, that's my opinion.
You'll need to reorganize, so, I mean, you could reorganize temporarily until that happens, but you will need to reorganize.
And interim, Chair?
I, I guess, I'll make a motion, and we, then we can discuss it and vote it up or down, I don't care one way or the other. But I'll make a motion, um, that we retain the current Chair and Vice Chair, subject to further review by this commission at a later date.
Go until someone new joins.
Permanent commissioner?
Yeah. Yeah, cause it's your organization, your structure. I, I'd have to look back at the bylaws, but I mean, you essentially can change Chair and Vice Chair. I mean, if there's a majority of the commission who wants to pass a motion to change how you do business, that's your prerogative, so.
I don't wanna lose the extra, oh, wait, no, there's no extra.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's an issue, cause again, even if you got to later, Mr. Welch says, no, I don't wanna revisit it, I, I'm fine with it is. Three other members, if someone makes a motion, someone seconds it, and three members vote for it, that, you know, motion's gonna carry, so.
Yes, I will, I will move that we maintain the current, uh, Chair and Vice Chair, until such time as the Board of Trustees appoints another, not permanent, but, full member of the commission, at which time we can review those.
Yeah, that works.
I second.
Comments?
Nope.
Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Berner.
Yes.
Mr. Tysman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Wester.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, motion passes. All right, on to amendment discussion. Starting with chapter sixteen. So, Mr. Page sixteen dash one, General sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, uh, is this my first commission meeting? Could you, um, just explain the process for recommending our revisions to the, uh, to Joe for the resolution?
Yep, so, uh, process is, we've made it through one through fifteen at this point, just from a general review perspective. Uh, we're working page by page, so we're gonna go sixteen through twenty tonight. If there's any comments that you've got from that point, then we make those comments. Uh, at point, we have not initiated anything from an overall public review perspective at this point. So, once we work through the working sessions, which is the five of us, um, and alternates, then we will initiate at that point, and then it'll become public record, and then we'll take public comment, and we'll be able to make final changes as we work through, uh, the revisions.
Great.
So, any changes we're making right now, Joe's been getting that, he's been making modifications, that's been the update that he's been giving us at this point. So, if we go back, which we haven't done, one through fifteen, then the majority of those revisions are already in there as we work through this. So, it's kind of a process.
Thank you.
Work?
Yep.
Okay. All right, sixteen, anybody wanna start?
I got sixteen oh three oh five.
Sixteen oh three oh five. Okay.
I was just like, um, let me see exactly where this was. I just was wondering, I'd be if there should be an exemption, exemption for open fences. Like, open fences in the sense, like, not a fence, but wood, like, you can see through the fence.
Well, in terms of how close they are to the right of way?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, we would wanna know the exact specifications, cause obviously the theory is, you wanna be able to see through it, so you can see if, like, someone's walking down the sidewalk or a car's.
So, you're thinking like a split rail fence that would be put in place versus?
Wire fence, something like that. I mean, I'm just, it doesn't need to be in there for me, but, I mean, that was just something I was thinking about.
I don't know, that becomes, Joe, what do you think about regulating that and enforcing that?
Yeah, I think the only trick is trying to write the specification so we know what exactly, you know, how far apart do the rails have to be, and then they've gotta provide me that measurement, or how far apart do the bars have to be, before we consider, you know, enough visibility. That, that'd be my concern. I feel like, so this standard used to be a lot tougher, basically, you used to not be able to put anything taller than thirty-six inches within the required front setbacks, so like on a RR property, you were, your fence was seventy-five feet away from your right of way line, but, you're seventy-four feet away, but we're still telling you, oh, you can only be thirty-six inches, which was just like, seemed like, it seemed like too, too injurious to people. So, several years ago, we went to this twenty-foot standard, assuming, you know, we're like, okay, well, that's the standard length of a car. So, if you're backing out of your driveway, you've gotten to that point, you're probably gonna still be able to see who's coming. And then, you know, there's nothing precluding someone from putting vegetation up that basically serves the same purpose, that would block their view. Um, but tha- but that's the working theory, and I feel like it cut down on a lot of variance requests we were getting on that item, and we put some of the exceptions in, um, for the pool fencing, and sort of the code conflicts with, or not conflict. You could get in a situation with the pool where the pool's allowed in a certain location, but you have to do the fencing, but then we have this fencing restriction, so we, so a lot of this fencing language is actually just being relocated from, um, the existing article it's in. This was an attempt to get it into general standards and out of the lands, I think it was in landscaping standards, which I understand a little bit why it was in landscaping standards, but, um, it wasn't easy for a lot of people to find. So, I felt like, well, this gen- general standard should be the standards that basically apply everywhere regardless of your zoning district by and large, so that's why I moved it to sixteen.
Okay.
Seems just more intuitive, so, I'm not gonna say it's exactly worded the way it appears.
I don't feel as strong, I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, it's a fair question, I, yeah. And generally, you know.
Just imagine that some people do want a fence up to the end of their, um, like, property. And as long as you can see through it, I don't super say why it would be a, a measure.
Well, and that would be a good BZA case, and that would be the argument that they would make. They'd go to the BZA and give them the typical specification and say, here's the height, here's the visibility, you can clearly see through it. As long as they built exactly that fence, which the BZA could lock them into, uh, you know, so, they'd have to pay six hundred dollars for the privilege to make the request, but, other than that.
Okay.
My next one is sixteen oh six oh one.
Anything before then? Sixteen oh five, previously oh five, now oh six.
Mm-hmm.
Entry features.
Mm-hmm.
The maximum height permitted for an entry feature excluding architectural features or gates spanning over blah, blah, blah. Uh, is, in our definitions, is there a definitions section to the resolution, what is entry feature designated as?
Yeah, so these, Joe, yes, they are, they are defined, so basically, any word that's capitalized like a proper noun throughout the resolution, unless it is truly a proper noun, um, is gonna have a definition assigned to it.
Great.
Um, which are in Article four, so I'll find it here real quick, and I can read it for you.
Which one, which word?
Entry feature is currently defined as any structure or accessory wall intended to identify the entrance of a lot or tract that colon A is located within sixty feet of the intersection of the center line of any driveway or entrance in the adjoining public or private right of way, and B does not exceed seventy-five, it was fifty, we're proposing to change it to seventy-five. Linear feet in length measured end to end along a lot or tracks frontage exclusive of any gates or architectural features that,
Great.
go across the driveway.
My question is related to that, thank you for, for explaining that, um, logistically. What is the difference between an architectural feature and an entry feature? Is there ambiguity with that?
Um, usually the entry features flank the driveways. Uh, that, that's basically what they are, they're, they're essentially adjacent to the driveway. So, you got the, you know, the, the column piers, they may have gates attached to them, they may have some wing walls out to it, but it's clearly not intended to serve as a, a perimeter fence around the entire of the property or prevent intrusion, it's more of a, just a.
Okay, so if it's an architectural feature that has gates that spans over the driveway, that, um, is a different type of regulation?
Well, we consider that an entry feature, we just don't count that area over the driveway towards your linear footage measurement, cause we know usually they're equal distance on each side, generally, not always, but. Now, sometimes you're gonna have an architectural feature that gets tied into a, you know, once it starts meeting the definition more of a fence, where it's clearly meant to enclose an area, by, by and large enclose an area, prevent intrusion into the yard space itself, and it, then it starts coming more of a fence as opposed to just an entry feature. So, and we do have these in, in areas.
Great, thank you.
Sixteen oh six, uh, oh one. New diversions shall be, shall be required to place more than one dwelling in a planned development. Um, I wanted to add to it, um, as long as it complies with the density standards, just clarification.
Oh, yeah, subject to any dens, I can add that, like, subject to applicable density restrictions or something, right? Yep. Basically, what we were just saying there is.
We worried about density, or are we worried about lot coverage?
Well, it, it just basically, well, right now, it just kind of leaves it open, so I was like, yeah, it, it still applies to density, that's basically what I was.
Yeah.
Density should still be.
So, both?
I mean, both would be fine, would.
What's that?
So, both, density and lot coverage?
To applicable, to, I could put other applicable restrictions such as density, lot coverage, et cetera.
Thank you. All right. Nice call.
Sixteen oh seven oh one, this is a general comment, text saying, and it relates to Sebastian's comment.
I'm sorry, which number were we on?
Sixteen oh seven oh one.
Okay.
Reduction of area, says, uh, you know, required, second line, required by this resolution without a variance or divergence. I've noticed that some of the sections specifically call out that without a variance or divergence, but other sections, you know, ninety-eight percent of the zoning resolution does not specifically mention that. Is there a particular reason why certain sections do specifically say you can't do this without a divergence and variance, and other ones do not? Seems to me that it's implied, it's either, you're either incongruence with the zoning resolution, if not, you need a divergence or a variance?
Yeah, I, I think that's sort of a stigial language on how they used to sort of write these codes. I agree, it's somewhat natural that that is going to be the case, so it's, it's probably somewhat extraneous wording that's not, doesn't need to be there. That's existing, since it's in black, that's the existing text, but doesn't mean if we don't like it, we can't, uh, take it out.
I guess, I just, the, the reason why I ask is, uh, I, I could imagine somebody submitting a, you know, something for the, like we had today,
Mm-hmm.
and they might not think they can request a divergence or a variance for a particular section.
And I do think that is why it's in there, cause you could have someone reading it who doesn't know zoning.
Right.
And is not aware that that is a possibility, either as the applicant, or someone who might even be reading who's in oppose to whatever's being asked for, and not understand, oh, there is a way that they can ask for this under the code, you know, and get relief to that standard, so.
But isn't that the same for every section?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, theoretically, you could put that in every section, I don't know why, I really don't know why it's specifically so called out here.
If we wanted to use this opportunity to get rid of all of that text.
Yeah, maybe we could just send, end that line at, um, less than the minimum required by this resolution period, and strike out without a variance or divergence, I mean.
Seems like you could do that throughout.
Yeah, I can go through the code and see, you know, where does it make sense. Every once in a while, I feel like it does have some value to be there in certain sc- scenarios, I'm not sure I would. I can't sit here and recommend like blanket, just taking them all out. It might be a case-by-case basis, but here, I don't think it's necessary to include it.
So, do you wanna take it as a takeaway and review to see where we can take it out then?
Yes. Yep.
Next.
I got sixteen oh nine oh one, I don't know if anyone's.
Yeah, I figured we'd talk about that one.
All right.
Side and rear, re, hold on, side and re, I cannot say this word here, this is my English is.
Side and rear yard setbacks for accessory buildings shall be ten feet.
Yes, um.
Okay.
When the required, uh, side yard setback is less than ten feet, uh, the accessory building may be located, um, at that reduced setback. I'm just like, why do you even put that in there? I mean, it's, it seems kind of redundant, I mean, it should be, like, just comfort and divergence then, in my opinion.
Well, what you have is existing plans, development plans, PRDs, that have side yard restrictions that may actually allow them closer. And if the two conflict, we're gonna have to go to the standard in the code that says the more strict shall apply. So, we built this standard in that says, if your plan allows for you to go to seven feet, we're gonna honor the seven feet, because that's already what's been approved. Going forward with a new plan, we're gonna try to do the ten, um, because that's what's in the book. But there are old plans that have different numbers, and some of them are less than ten. Not a lot, I don't think, but I think there are out there.
Well, I mean, but, why, why do we still have it in there if the new were, I mean, it's, it's already there, so, why, why do we have it in there?
Well, because someone in one of those plans that allows them to be closer than ten feet could come in and wanna put a shed in at some point. I have to be able to administer and permit that, if I, it just says ten feet, I'm gonna have to tell them no, even if their plan says yes, because the codes would conflict and say the more strict, which is the ten feet would apply. So, we're trying to just be fair to people and honor these plans that have been approved in the past. Again, I don't think we have a lot of those situations, but they do exist.
Other comments on, on nine oh one?
And I was, I forgot to mention, you did receive some feedback, um, actually, I'm sorry, I sent it to Chairman Leff, did you get that email?
I did.
So, we can.
You and I are gonna talk about it tonight.
Okay.
My next one is sixteen fourteen.
Anything oh nine? Okay. Fourteen?
Sixteen fourteen, fourteen oh three.
Sixteen fourteen, oh three.
It just seemed a little bit redundant, it's like, what, wha- what other watering pond, pondments are there that, like, would fall under this, like, I feel like everything's.
Private ponds.
I know, but ponds is in there, right? Ponds is a decorative pond, I mean, that's, that's kinda that, right? I mean, ponds is in there.
It's decorative ponds, lakes or water features located within, oh, designated open space of a PRD. We have decorative ponds on like RR properties, like, there's one, you drive down Big Walnut Road towards somebody road, there's one in that front yard right against the road.
Okay, okay, so it's, okay.
We just didn't wanna say, because someone has to have a stormwater pond, or wants to put a decorative pond. The PRDs, you're getting to review those PRDs, so we understand that if you see a pond there, you're gonna be okay with it. But my office, we don't write zoning permits for private ponds, in fact, I don't even think the county permits, it's sort of like a loophole a little bit, to be honest. So, we at least wanna have something in the zoning code that speaks to them, even if we don't necessarily write a permit for the pond, we can say, well, yeah, but you can't put it in this location. And I think that was by and large more of a public safety department re- request, especially when you see some of those close to the road, you can imagine, if someone goes off the road, they're gonna go into the pond.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the Ohio EPA takes precedence over all.
Correct.
So, and they will dictate where you could put a pond.
Yes, yeah, that comes into play, but we have, you, you don't see them built as much anymore, um, but they happen sometimes.
Next. I have sixteen sixteen oh one, dot A.
Okay.
This is exceptions, modification, interpretations of height regulations, has to do with some exceptions to height regulations. In other words, says spires, belfries, cupolas, domes, bulkheads, elevator penthouses, or parapet walls extending not more than four feet above the limiting height to the building. Is that saying parapet walls extending not more than four feet above the limiting height of the building? Or is that all of these things that were listed extending not more than?
All of these things, so if you think there's a punctuation change that needs to be made, then I need to make that, cause it's intended, and we've had a lot of, there's, there's some history with this section, and that's why we're trying to clean it up and make it a lot more clear as to what this really means and, um, applies to.
Is there a way to say something like exterior elements, uh, such as blah, 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 may not extend more than four feet?
There's an extra not in there, I think.
Oh, is that, is that one of the problems?
That's, it reads, now I see what you're saying, okay, so.
I'm trying to find it.
So, it's the second to last, it's the second line, the last line, structure so as long as said feature does not project or extend, and you've got not, so extend not more than four feet, so we're saying a minimum of four feet. We should say, should not project or extend more than four feet above.
Oh, so that.
The second not after, the not after extend should not be there.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
At least make sure.
Correct, yep.
I agree.
I see what you're saying, yep.
You were already making the negative, and then we made it another negative, and now we're saying it has to be four feet. You were already making the negative, and then we made another negative, and now we're saying it has to be four feet or higher, so, no. So, we don't want it more than four feet.
I mean, we could make that list, um, I mean, we could narrow down that list and not include so many things.
I think your rewrite works, Joe.
I, because the intent was, you really want to give people, while it's not intended to be an exhaustive list, you really want to get people an idea of, this is really what we mean when we talk about these things. It's like I said, there's been an applicable, applicability issue with this code section in particular in the past that we're trying to clean up and get it working better, um, that it is. And this is being in conjunction with some other height changes we're proposing anyway, to try to just bring a lot more clarity to this issue, because there's, there's been situations where things happened where I don't think the way it was written, it was the intent, but because of how it was written, we had to apply it more generally than I think, um, had been desired or intended originally. So, I think if you read that list, most gen, reasonable people would understand really what we're, we're talking about here.
Yeah.
And like I said, this is being done in conjunction with the change with how we're defining building height and how that gets measured for residential and non-residential, and trying to get that all to sync up and work better.
No, I appreciate, I think, I think your rewrite of that from the previous version is significantly better.
And I'll tell you, we are seeing some things, like, some of the houses we're seeing come in lately, I mean, it, it's great, we're getting, you know, some big beautiful homes, but we're seeing some pretty wild things that we're not, e- even for us are. You know, Susan's been doing this for twenty-something years and has been sort of surprised or taken aback at some of the things we're seeing coming through in terms of permitting, just. Like I said, it's great, but the, the success is bringing in some things that I don't think we just ever expected or anticipated.
Alright, next. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, nothing? Anything more in sixteen at all? Now, we get to massive changes. Alright, seven, chapter seventeen.
So, this one has quite voluminous.
Took a lot of pages to even get to the text.
I guess, before you jump into that, so, one of my struggles with seventeen, aside from its length, well, it is its length, that's the struggle. With these conditional use standards, it goes back to the theory of, you want to be directing people back and forth between different pages of the code and saying, go here for this standard, go here for this for this standard. Because when you do that, you can shorten everything up, because you don't have to repeat yourself over and over again. But to the same degree, when you want to do the one-stop shop and want to know exhaust, all the exhaustive lists without having to flip all the pages back and forth, it's easier to just repeat yourself over and over. But the downside to that is, if you want to change that standard, now you gotta change it in every location, and it also makes the document a lot longer. So, some of it's a little bit philosophical and just what you think works best. I tended to go on the side of, let's repeat ourselves, and if we feel like there's opportunities to tighten things up, uh, shorten things up in certain areas, we can do that. Also, you know, a lot of this is a function of how many uses we're now putting into the code. Um, but I think we've gone through that before, as I really believe in trying to be as exhaustive and, as we can to try to be, you're never gonna be able to predict any, everything, but, um, really trying to get ourselves in a position where there are fewer surprises or stuff that we just couldn't think of or expect. So, that's, that's the general theory with seventeen.
So, just philosophical question and or applicability. If there should be something that would meet two different ones of the definitions within seventeen, let's say amphitheater and something else. Does it direct, do you have to comply with both fully, or is it only the more restrictive one?
My non-legal opinion would be that they would have, I would assume they would have to apply with both. So, say you're proposing a use that has an amphitheater and some other use that's specifically listed in here, a shopping center, a big, large, big box retailer, big box retailer. I would say, yeah, you have to apply with the standards in both of those separate sections. And the more, if they do conflict, again, the more strict would apply. And we did put that in Article Five, where we basically said, hey, we have the right to say that you have more than one use classification. It's not like you get only one, and congratulations, you get off scot-free with the rest, so.
So, is the requirement in five already take care of that then, in saving that, or do we need to say it again in seventeen?
Let me-
You qualify for more than one of these sections, all-
Sure.
Apply.
Yeah, I understand the question. Let me, um, see how we worded that. I was gonna go back to see-
That's a lot of scrolling. Because then we get into your grid work and-
It probably would not be a bad idea to repeat that concept here. I actually like that idea, again, it's adding a little bit more text, but there's very few people are probably gonna go read five, because it's not really like a section that you apply. It's informational, yeah, it's a regulation, but you're, a lot of people probably aren't gonna read five.
There's just so much in seventeen.
So, I can, I'll try to think of some language to draft up to cover.
You're, you already have-
Subject to Article Five, if you're determined to have more than one use, you are having to comply with multiple standards, the obvious.
Okay. Then, my other one, and because it applies in multiple, I'll just pull out seventeen oh three oh four. We say noise control, we've got three different things that are in there, we talk about two time periods. But those time periods don't cover twenty-four hours.
Okay, I'm sorry, where are we at?
Seventeen oh three oh four. I'm just doing amphitheater noise controls, the very first one, noises falls in a lot of the different seventeen sections.
And that section, that verbiage tends to repeat itself.
It repeats itself, but here we are, we've got ten PM to seven AM for that piece, we've got nine AM to eight AM, but we're not covering from eight AM to nine AM during the day. So, do we want, what is the methodology of not putting something in there if we're gonna already regulate for most of the day, not all of the day?
Yeah, I mean, if you feel like we need to be clear on that, add language or revise the language, I'm, I'm all for it.
I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so-
There's-
I had some issues with that, too.
So, let's figure out what that looks like.
I'd like to know exactly how you'd like to see that.
I mean, overnight, we're already saying it's limited to seventy-five decibels.
Yeah.
But during daytime hours, do we have an inclination of what we want to say?
For me, yeah, there needs to be a limit, so, what, what is a good limit on that, that's just the question. I, I, I don't know, I don't know decibels that great.
Well-
I could go look at the noise.
I've got a number, but do you have something in mind?
I, well, I can tell you a little bit where that theory came from, was like, even if you look at the noise ordinance, during the daytime, it's basically assumed that, I don't wanna say you can make as much noise as you want, but there's more of an expectation that there's just going to be noise happening amongst just an everyday living. So, unless you're a disturbing the peace situation kind of scenario that the cops would get involved with, I think the idea is, but for these, that you could just be making noise, like, you could have your car stereo blasting, right? You could be out in the parking lot at Kroger and jump your volume as high as it could, roll your windows down and blast out that noise, and unless Kroger tries to kick you off their property for being too loud, I'm not sure you're really gonna be in trouble with anybody.
Well, they can, because they can trespass you, so.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, if Kroger trespasses you and you don't leave, then you've got an issue. But if they don't do that, there's really no, so I, I think that's where the theory comes from. But I could also see why we would say, yeah, but that's an individual, their car, now we're talking about an actual business use. We want to control that, um, a little bit more.
So, should these timeframes not be the same?
For each area?
Or-
Well, I'm just looking at amphitheater here, I mean, why the different timeframes between when you can use an outdoor speaker system versus produce more than or exceed seventy-five decibels?
Like, subpoint A only applies if you're up against a, or within five hundred feet of a residential or planned residential zoning district. B is a universal standard. And then C, sort of the general protocol that we're not gonna cite you, because you had to get on the PA and say, hey, a tornado's coming, and you had to be really loud about it, we're not gonna obviously get on people with that.
But if B is a universal standard, should we not apply that for using speakers?
Yeah, I mean, it seems appropriate. Seventy-five is pretty darn soft, if you're gonna use speakers and you're gonna have-
I think that's the thought process is-
You're gonna allow somebody to do anything like, you know, the GMRCs, let's go back, I mean, we already approved their outdoor band, there's no way seventy-five's gonna work for them to hold a outdoor music event at seventy-five decibels.
You're basically telling them their show has to stop at nine o'clock.
Yeah, true.
That's, that's the underlying implication.
The underlying, yeah, because they, they have to stop early because of the distance piece. So, seventy-five is fine, at nine, done, we're done, but what do we say during the day? Before nine o'clock?
Yeah, before nine o'clock.
Do we need to put something in place that limits, so there's actually a code piece here, even though we don't enforce deci- It puts a framework around it.
I just didn't, I, again, I'm not, since I, I think that was the other thing, I'm not the decibel expert on music performance venues, I wasn't quite as sure. I'm sure there's something out there that someone has for these things.
Oh, there is. I mean, there's noise ordinance, but you'd have to be in the city even as the noise ordinance.
Yeah, I guess I could see what, I'm sure Columbus probably has something.
They do, they put one in place because of, because an amphitheater used to be around.
Yeah.
So, there's one in place.
Well, and they've got that one downtown, or, whatever, they're, they're calling it these days.
Yeah, the lot, yeah.
Yeah.
The Commons has concerts.
Commons has concerts.
I could look into that and see what they have.
I mean, that's probably, that's probably reasonable.
Okay, I'll, I'll-
They've got, they've got it, Albany has one with the outdoor amphitheater that they've got in place.
I'll look around and see what others have and see if there's like a common number, or, yeah.
My thing was also like, how C is written, exemptions to the above shall be permitted, um, if the adjacent property is located within a non-residential district, zoning district, and further answers necessary to address immediate public concerns. So, it's like, from the moment you're not close to a residential district, you can do whatever, it seems almost like it's what you write there, which is probably not the best way to write that.
Well, but the last part of that allows for tornadoes, I remember.
Well, yeah, that's, well, no, the last part, but the, the other part says like, hey, if you're not next, next to a residential or planned residential district, um, this doesn't really apply to you.
Well, uh, like, because it does say shall be.
That's true, so if you're-
So, we could change shall.
If you're surrounded by non-residential properties, the theory is-
Whatever you want, I mean, there's a limit.
Be noisier, because, you know, generally speaking, not always, but generally speaking, it's gonna be more tolerable.
I, I think we just need-
So, change shall?
Not only shall, I just, I think you just also need to find the limit, like, I'm, I'm sure it can be louder, but what is that? Again, and, because now it's endless, like, it's whatever.
I do think, I, I agree, I think there needs to be some rewording there, because we still, even if you're surrounded by non-residential properties, I don't want C to trump A, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, I need to, I'll, I may need to think about that, but I, I get what you're saying, and I agree with it. Because I don't think anyone has a problem with the latter part of that statement, I think it's the former, right?
Yes. Or we remove it completely and only allow it under divergence.
You could do that, too, and just know that the latter, you know, even if someone complained that, hey, they had a, they were really loud when they said there was a fire on the property, like, well, we're not citing them for that. And just know, we don't necessarily have to write it down, we just know as common sense is gonna dictate, we're not gonna. But my concern is, it's a busy event, it's not necessarily a fire or tornado, but for whatever reason, to keep the crowd from crushing people, you know, crowd crush, they have to tell everyone, everyone take a step back, or two steps back, you know, when you have those situations. That's a safety issue, I don't feel like we should, you know, be citing people, because they were trying to prevent a situation from happening. That's what I'm trying to get at with that. Again, some of it's a common sense approach, but I don't want someone to be like, literally reading this and be like, well, yeah, but it doesn't say that's an exception, so that was a violation.
Alright, so you're gonna look at wording on that.
Yeah, I'll see, because I definitely don't want C to, the, the first part of C to trump A.
Which means seventeen oh five.
Yeah, and I'd have to repeat all these changes in all those other sections.
Alright, next.
I'm seventeen oh five.
Seventeen oh five?
Um, so, let me see where that was, seventeen oh five oh two, this, uh, this, the sites shall have direct vehicular access to an arterial and/or collector street as further designated by the current Delaware County thorough, um, thoroughfare plan, and directly access to a local street shall be prohibited. Um, for me, it's like, definitely for an amusement resorts, um, that's gonna be over fifty acres, is one enough? Like, wh- what is the amount, like, when do we need to put something in there? Like, when, when do we require a secondary access point?
Well, it doesn't say singularly, it says it has to have access to an arterial street.
Yeah, I know, one.
But I think he's mandate, you want a mandate that they have to have more than one.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say-
It doesn't say one.
No, I know, but my point is, should be put in there that there is like, when can you do one, when can you do-
There's nothing precluding them from only doing one, is his point. We're not saying, they could say, well, I'm connected to State Route three, I've met this standard, I have one access onto State Route three. And it could be a, a hundred acre thing, and we may say, well, yeah, but we really think you ought to have more than one access point.
Like, we, we don't have anything that's, like, in the PRD, we have it, right?
We do, based on the number of homes.
So, we could put two, I don't think that's abnormal. I think we have other sections where we require more than one.
Yeah.
I can mirror that language if you want.
What is the threshold gonna be?
Well, yeah, that, I mean, that, that's a question, yeah.
I think it is, I think, let me go to PCD real quick.
Maybe it's the amount of people that be, okay, can you be there? I don't, I don't know.
PCD, I think, is based on acreage, there's like an acreage trigger for it. And I did reword it based on your conversation back, um, in March, about the distance between those access points, and I think that was a good add, um, that the commission wanted to see.
By way of example.
So, here's, here's how PID says it.
Okay.
Um, planned industrial districts less than twenty acres in the area shall have direct access to one arterial street. Planned industrial districts of twenty or more acres in the area shall have direct access to one arterial street and one, and to one collector street and/or two access points to an arterial street. So, there's, so you could base it, you could say like, for every twenty acres, you have to provide an access point.
I guess from my perspective, maybe this is just a, I would rather require on all of these, require two, and then ask them to come and explain why they don't need to.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, because if it's coming before you, they could ask for a divergence.
Okay.
For acres over twenty?
For any. I think you just said for any.
Yeah, whether it's five acres or twenty acres, I mean, right? I, 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 I know we're getting down into the weeds at that point of debating a divergence, because, well, it's fifteen acres versus a fifty acre site, but we've obviously faced this issue, at least in the residential world, of how many access points. Mandate two, and let the property owner argue why it should be less.
And are you suggesting that for all of these sections, or just the temporary section?
I think all of them.
There's definitely multiple sections, I mean, maybe not all, there's a few smaller kind of type of things, but, yeah, there's definitely a, there's definitely a couple that, that should have that in there.
I would agree, these lar, these uses that are, could be very large, I, I agree with that. There may be a couple of these uses where two may seem-
I mean, home occupation probably doesn't need to have it, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
No.
But that standard probably doesn't appear there either, so. I can go through it, and if I feel like there's ones where, are we really sure we want to do that with this use, maybe that seems like a little overkill, I'll flag it and let you know.
Okay.
So, do you need to add park or drive to amphitheater then?
Probably two, yeah.
Because it doesn't even have anything in it from the other sections. It's direct vehicular access, there is no, there is no section that-
Yeah, if you think you want it in there. I think my only thing with amphitheater was, you have big amphitheaters and small amphitheaters.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I mean, but the point was, then, then ask, let them ask for a divergence.
If you put amphitheater in a park.
Yeah, well, if it's in a public park, it's gonna be exempt anyway, but.
So, we should add?
But like, say someone puts in a little fifty-person one in the corner of their site, hard to think of one, someone would do that, but-
At a school.
Alright, so, put-
Could happen.
Let's put vehicular access and make sure it's in all of them, so it's got, we need to add it to seventeen oh three.
Okay.
What if Alcott puts a little amphitheater back next to one of their playgrounds, and they use it for outside, any environment?
Yeah, that's unfortunately not. Okay, let's use that example, but assume it's not a public school.
Okay.
If it's a public school, they can do whatever they want, essentially, by and large, um, but yeah, let's say it's a private school, that's a good question.
Does the amphitheater itself?
Genoa Baptist, let's use, not to pick on someone, but they are a, a large private school in the township, so.
Would the amphitheater itself need to have access to an arterial road, and if so, like, what distances that arterial road need to be to the, what is the threshold of the amphitheater? Or is it, it's part of the larger site, it's not its own platin use?
Cause they could rent it out, right, they don't have to use it.
Well, not even an amphitheater, what if they put on a football stadium?
Yeah.
At some point.
They have two entrances. They already have two.
Which that site already has multiple entrances.
How many acres is that?
Good question, I don't recall. But they definitely have enough room to put in a football stadium if they ever want to, I can tell you that.
Um, but that's got two entrances already.
But yeah, I mean, so they would, under that standard, they would have, plot, I would say it's the latter in your situation, that's how I would view it, especially as part of a planned development.
It's just, it, as long as the.
As long as it's all tied together, as part of a master plan development, we would say.
Okay.
Now, I guess, the only scenario where that might not be true is if it was so, if it was out in the corner and like, yeah, it's on the same track, but there's no roads or dry aisles connecting the two, and it's basically functioning independently, then I would say you might have more of an argument of saying it needs to have two because there's really no, there's no way to get to those two on Genoa Baptist site because they're not connected.
Right.
Okay.
Again, not to throw Genoa Baptist under the bus there, we're just a.
They're using this example, not as an actual case study.
Correct.
Um, alright, so, two entrances and we make sure that vehicular access is added to all these sections.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I know by and large, I don't like to say this, but we're gonna see a lot of amphitheaters pop up, and for that being an issue, probably not, but.
Next.
This was just like a general comment that I had here with amusement park, um, do all of our zoning districts say how many, how much percent landscape, landscape there needs to be?
These would all still be subject to any of the land, and as we get into twenty, you'll see it's pretty voluminous, so.
Yeah.
There could be scenarios if you wanted to go above and beyond what we've drafted for twenty, if you feel like there's certain scenarios that it's so pressing that I would think you would want, we will wanna review twenty and see what they would have to do before we would think about whether or not there's any need for supplemental, just to make sure we're not, again.
Yeah, okay.
Overdoing it.
Eighty-eight acres in round numbers.
Hmm?
I, I just went on the auditor's website and.
Oh, for.
Round numbers, they, the, Genoa Baptist owns eighty-eight acres.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, I'd say that's right.
Alright, next. Any more than seventeen?
Uh, seventeen forty, zero one.
Seventeen four zero?
Seventeen four zero.
Earlier.
Okay, go ahead.
I've got seventeen thirteen.
Seventeen thirteen.
Thirteen oh two, the minimum lot size requirement of such establishments shall be, uh, one half acre, like, which, like, where can you build less than half an acre? I mean, it seems kinda weird that that's in there, it might.
Well, we have some of those in the shopping center developments where those parcels are part of a larger development, but they're. We also don't want, you know, again, not picking any property, but like, you couldn't do this anyway because it's part of the Hoover watershed overlay and that use wouldn't be allowed there, but like, that parcel diagonally across the street from here is probably less than a half acre, do you wanna see a gas station try to squeeze in there?
Mm-hmm, well, no.
I don't wanna see it in public parking lot, but that was.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, maybe we can make it another number, that's what I'm. For me, it can be more than a half an acre.
Um, I mean, I'll go look at the existing gas stations to see what size, like Turkey Hill and, well, we don't really have a lot of them, UDF.
Are, but.
Well, it says charging station too, and.
Only, yeah, and that's the thing too, cause.
They don't have to be too big.
We don't know what the future holds on that, you know, there's all sorts of different opinions on the future of EV and how mainstream it's gonna go, so.
I got seventeen thirteen oh three, C, so about the pumps, chargers, canopies, um, so, number one says, uh, located behind the principal, uh, principal building, so I'm kinda confused, like, why would the pumps, aren't the pumps in front?
Some of it is just trying to, there, there's a push with some of these automotive uh, centric uses to not make the cars the forefront and center and try to get more of the character as you're driving down the road, you're not just seeing the pump canopies where you're seeing the building first, the people, and then the pump canopies are sort of hidden behind it, so you're not, it's just visually. Uh, good example is Get Go on state rou- on state street. If you think of Get Go on state street, now it's the backside of the building, but the, that building faces state street. It's between the pumps and state street, think of that type of design. Now, we can all still see the pumps, but the idea is if you're walking by, you don't have all these cars right next to you filling up their gas and it's noisy and there's all these odors, it's just trying to create a more pleasant sort of pedestrian experience, to be honest.
I think that, wasn't that one of the stipulations with Sheets on Polaris?
Yeah, the use, I've seen that with Sheets, I've enacted this provision myself in my prior job and that's where I got the idea from. That's not uncommon with a lot of places these days, they wanna, in some areas, they wanna push them to the back.
Um, seventeen thirteen oh four, additional uses be an auction house, why would there be an auction house and an automotive fuel charging station, I, I just find it a weird occupancy.
That is interesting, why did I put that in there?
I mean, all the rest I can kinda see, but that just seems kinda.
Yeah, I'm not, I may have copied and pasted that list and maybe forgot to just take that one out, cause I, I cannot sit here and tell you why that would be in there. I'll just strike it, cause that does strike me as odd as being in there. Oh, maybe that's why, yeah, I know we're not accepting public comment, but that might be why. Car auctions.
I know. Is it, is that an auction house, I mean, that's not an actual built, like.
Well, they could have one.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of times the car auctions are these big sprawling complexes, but.
But that's just like, that's just like a one-time use, they use it, parking lot and next time.
Well, if they have the building, if it's, you know, is Sheets gonna have one? No, but could you have like a one-offs? Private, you, you know, Bob's gas station and he also happens to run his little au- you know, he has a building where he also auctions the cars off, possibly.
Or maybe Harris does one, it's not a gas station, but.
Well, the guy across the street in Westerville was selling cars.
Yeah?
In his repair, out of, what's the name of that place?
That's selling, Joe's?
No. The body shop in Westerville.
Uh.
Oh, yeah, what was that place?
Just Buzz.
Nah.
Oh!
By Worthington Cylinders.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Just Buzz is right there.
Alright. I don't go down there.
So maybe we ought to keep it then?
Alright, leave it. Alright, next.
Um, for automobile wash, I just have something additional, like, should we have like, like a minimum of like, um, like the driveway length that people are queuing in some, like, definitely, like, not the self-service ones, but I'm talking about like, the one like, yeah, muu muu, or like, where like, you can have like a line and it can block the street, like, should there be like some kind of minimum kind of length that they can?
What number are you on?
Seventeen sixteen, yes.
I could look at the drive-through standards and see if there's anything we need to pull over from there.
Okay.
Cause it's sort of the same theory, right, about queuing or the vehicles waiting, are you worried about it being too short or too long?
That there wouldn't be enough space, like.
Okay, you're worried about being too short, okay.
Till like when muu muu opened up and it was extending all the way out into the drive-in, Verne Meyer, all that type of. Or if you go on Polaris, that was going all the way out to the light for a while.
I just happened to think of it here, but do you wanna have any bay restrictions? In terms of the number of bays?
For self-wash?
Or, I mean, yeah, you don't really see the automatic ones have multiple bays, but again, theoretically, someone could do it, there's, there's nothing precluding them other than just whether or not they wanna spend the money to do it. It's not like it's impossible.
And there we just, we call it out, ten off-streets, waiting spaces in an assembly line.
Or we just don't restrict them, we just take whatever we get, if you get a three-bay automatic car wash, you get a three-bay automatic car wash. If it doesn't bother you, then.
Good.
I mean, I figure if you're having a one-bay car wash, one or two extra bays probably isn't gonna really change.
The bays, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't care that much how many bays there are, I mean, it, it probably is, depending on the size of the lot.
After driving by those like Buc-E's, I don't, not, anything's possible after you've seen one of those things, how large they are and what they, what they incorporate into them, so, could I see like a Buc-E's coming in, putting in ten-bay car wash? Yeah, sure, that sounds like something they would do, so, not that we have land large enough for one, but it's just, to think what if, right? Yeah, over by Dayton, right?
Right. Alright, next.
I'm at Bed and Breakfast, already brought this up one time before, so, um, I'm still like, uh, of the opinion that for seventeen eighteen oh one, such facilities shall only be permitted in a residential district when the lots, uh, contain, contain the use is situated immediately adjacent to a lot within a non-residential zoning district. I, I would wanna leave that last part out and make it so, like what we said before, ma- um, with the stipulation that it needs to be owner occupied.
Yeah, I think I remember changing that definition based on the conversation we had when we did article four. Oh, Paul, I hate to make you do this, cause I don't think I bookmarked this, what page are we on, two thirty-five? Could you, yeah, could you go back, is this the latest copy?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, could you see how we had that? Cause if we have that worded the way Sebastian's saying them, we wouldn't need to put it here, yeah, we added owner occupied.
Okay, well, I, I still would like to erase the last part, like, immediately adjacent to a non-residential district, I still feel like any residential, anywhere in the residential district, it should be allowed as long as the owner lives there as well, that's my opinion.
So I think it's, that's really a policy, again, sort of question for the commission of just what do you think makes sense? I drafted it the way I did, cause I was trying to think of, Bed and Breakfast is, you know, quasi-commercial, transitional type of use, so I thought, well, okay, transition between commercial and residential, but if the commission's comfortable saying, hey, in the middle of the lake or the woods, as long as you can meet these standards, you're allowed to have a bed and breakfast, you know, we can, you write it that way.
You just rent a room from your house, I mean, that's kinda what it is, and you provide breakfast, that's what Bed and Breakfast is, so I don't see what that, why that would be such a big deal.
Some, we've gotten calls in the past about like the Airbnb's, some people don't like the transient nature of the.
I understand Airbnb, I get that, cause Airbnb often they rent out a whole house and then the owner is not there, there's a difference, I feel like with a bed and breakfast, the owner is there, there is a.
Yeah, it depends, some, a lot of Airbnb's are the full house, but some of them could be a bedroom, I mean, I see those, I know those are listings, I've never used it like that, but. But that's the, that's the concern we've got in the past is the transient nature of people coming in and out of the neighborhoods.
So, Sebastian, you're recommending just such facilities shall be only permitted in the residential district, period, be done.
Well, we've probably, at that point, we would just delete that standard, cause there's really no point in that standard be- being there if we're not gonna have the.
Yeah, I'm not so sure I agree, I mean, maybe if it's owner occupied, but then if it's not owner occupied.
That's the definition of it, so.
Yeah, they won't.
Occupied, it's not, it's, we have other standards for like rentals and there is, um, there's something else, vacation rentals, which is more like a house separately, of course.
Yeah, we have vacation rentals and we have hotels.
So this is, this is actually something like, like, this is, this is not even Airbnb, cause I don't like that either, like, German Village, they buy up all these houses and then they just put an Airbnb in there and it's always occupied and prices go up and and you get all the trouble of people who actually don't live there, making a mess and going out partying, I get that.
I guess what's the advantage of doing it, just so we have more bed and breakfasts in our, in Genoa Township?
So any house could be.
Just the, the freedom of people.
I get that, that's the result, but what's the advantage of having that option, freedom?
Because it's a, well, freedom and it's a nice place here, like, around the dam, if you, if you would, like, I'm sure there are people actually doing this right now, but it's just a nice place to like, for people to, hey, I'm, I'm, instead of going to a hotel, I'm gonna get to this house, get a view over the lake or in the woods and, I mean, I think it brings something to this, um, to this area and it also, like, for people, it will generate, like, it will be part of their, um, it'll generate money.
Just know from an enforcement standpoint, owner occupied doesn't mean when they rent it out that the owner is there. Owner occupied just means they own the property and that's their residence, or one of their residents. They could rent it out and not necessarily have to be there, I cannot go into the house and verify that they've rented, that they're happening to be there at the same time as the renter.
Well, how could you state it that you also need to be there at the, I mean.
I don't think that's an enforceable provision. At least not through township zone, with the authorities of township zoning. Now you're starting to talk about other agencies that do those types of inspections.
Home occupancy kinda is that, I mean, like, because you have to be there, because, I mean, that's, then you can say like, oh no, I can also just rent that other place out and then I just have my shop downstairs, but I actually don't live upstairs.
Yeah, and that's, that's some of the, the risk.
What, what was, was there any bed and breakfast category in the previous residential?
No, that's why it's being added.
I mean, there's potential for a can of worms. If it hasn't been done before, now we're allowing it to happen.
And I think that was the other way I took, the other reason I took the approach I did is I didn't wanna change things too drastically. I feel like if one goes in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I'm, my office is gonna get a lot of calls, to be frank.
What are your side?
Happy calls.
Why, why would that be, you think, I mean?
They just don't like the fact that there's people that they don't know in their neighborhood.
I'm just gonna state my opinion, and this is Chip's opinion, I'm not in favor of encouraging or opening the door to renting of residential units.
But what, yeah.
Whether that's a bed and breakfast, a VB, VRBO, Airbnb, because once you go down the path of renting and encouraging the owner not to be occupying the property is when you start having issues of maintenance, who's coming in, who's coming out, all of that stuff, I, I mean, I think that's, that's part of the allure of Genoa Township is the folks that are here are vested in maintaining their property. That's just me.
And we can verify the, verify the owner occupation status because there's a tax credit with that that comes from the county. Now, our people are as forthright with that, but that's a matter for the tax office to investigate. But if, if clearly the tax rules are showing that they're not getting the owner occupied credit, then that means, yeah, they're renting it out to someone else, which is, is not illegal to buy a house and then rent it out for, as a living, as a dwelling, but we're talking about renting out as a commercial operation. And again, I think that's why I tried to limit it to, I, I didn't wanna take this issue too far and take something that we've never allowed to have done and now just say it can be allowed everywhere. That, that just seemed like a step too far to me, that's why I drafted it the way I did. Maybe in a few years, when they become more normal, people get used to it, maybe the, the community becomes more reminded to it, or maybe we can, special zoning district gets created, or you're allowed it just in the Hoover watershed area, or on properties right up against Hoover, because there could be some more draw there, I mean, those are things we could look at. Um, so I guess I consider this as sort of our dipping our toe in the water without fully jumping in on the topic.
Is there, wha- what was the genesis, sorry, we're spending a lot of time on Bed and Breakfast here, but what was the genesis of putting it in, was there a call for it?
Sure, no, that's a good question, especially because you're sort of playing catch-up, um, the idea with the uses was, the uses as they, they are in the code, in my assessment, were either way too overly broad, where stuff was probably being allowed in areas I'm not sure we really intended, because the, the definitions are so broad and vague, or they are over the other extreme, where they were so like extremely specific, it's like onion, awning manufacturing, why, why are we specifying awning manufacturing, what, what if you manufacture fence posts, are we saying you can't because you, you know, so there was some weird things like that. So basically redoing the whole use system, this has been a goal of mine probably since I started here, um, and we just are now getting to it, of redoing how we classify uses, define uses, and then making sure if we're doing it, we're gonna get as many as we can. I didn't wanna go with the NAICS system, cause NAICS has that tendency to either be really broad or like, the list is thirty pages long, because you got. has that tendency to either be really broad, or like, the list is thirty pages long, because you got sub-numbers for, and I'm sure the architects know it very well, for everything. And I also didn't wanna be, our zoning code to be subject to the definite, to the NAICS definitions. I wanna make sure that we can cater them to Genoa Township, so that's, so that, that's the, the background on that, is we're trying to overhaul the entire use system, trying to get into as many uses that we can think of as possible into the code, so we can predict things. Some of them are gonna be more likely than others. Bed and Breakfast is one I could foresee good, I'm fairly certain we've gotten calls about in the past, and I could see us getting calls about in the future, about people wanting to do that, again, especially with Hoover being here.
Yeah, I understand Hoover, your example there is something I can visualize. I have a hard time visualizing Hilmar Drive and seven bed and breakfasts in front of Alcott.
Can you envision six?
How do we navigate that? You know, is it in overly districts or what? I'm not sure.
And that's my concern, is there, there's streets, there's neighborhoods, and might be okay with them, but I think there's some that I would get some pretty angry phone calls from. I would say, talk to your zoning commission. I just enforce it.
Anyway, moving on.
We'll leave as is? Again, I mean, even if it gets adopted as is, and we change our minds. We can always change our minds later.
I think if you start it and bring it back up when we go back through the thing again. Let's think about it. Let's think about how that works out, cuz.
And maybe, maybe there's a middle ground somewhere between what I have written and, you know, allowing them everywhere. Maybe there's a different way to approach it that we just haven't thought of. Okay, next.
I'm at campground seventeen twenty-five. Um, I'm just seventeen twenty-five oh one. So what is this distance exactly? Is that the distance between like the different tents? Is that what, what you're talking about?
So I'm just reading it to make sure I can answer it correctly. Yeah, that's a good, areas is sort of a generic term. I, I think the theory is. So any area where we expect a vehicle to be, you want some sort of separation, so you don't have your tent there and some car goes drives by and now you've got dust blowing all into your tent. So, but I can look at whether or not we can change that, cuz there's a difference between separation between trailers, where you're gonna have the truck probably backing the trailer, and in tents, where you could have, but you would think there's, there's not always a car that goes with the tent, but by and large, in a lot of campgrounds, people are driving there, unpacking, unloading the tent. Again, do you want all those, that traffic going right by? Those areas, do you wanna keep some sort of buffer between where the, you're gonna expect the vehicles to be and sort of the, I guess, living space for lack of a, camping space for lack of a better term. But I'll, I'll look at that term to see if there's a better way to flush that out. Yep, I agree.
I have forty.
Oh, forty, oh gosh.
Four zero. I was optimistic.
I had seventeen twenty-nine, commercial and, and or private, uh, recreation facility. So, um, at seventeen twenty-nine oh four, you say the maximum density allowed, uh, on any lodge shall not exceed, uh, one field for every five acres, and that seems kind of vague, cuz it's like, fields, like a pickleball field versus soccer field? I mean, it just, it's like, the, the size is very different.
Yeah, and some of these standards, you know, candidly, I looked up and imported over from different codes I've researched, so we may look at, but like, that doesn't work for us, we don't think we need that, or it doesn't make sense, so. That's one I don't feel like I, I feel strongly about keeping, so if you're saying, hey, I don't think that really works, makes sense for us, we wanna just strike it, or come up with something different, or put a pin in and say, hey, we need to think about this later. Cuz I agree, you could, what's, what type of field are you talking about? Is it a field? Is it a court? Is it a hybrid? Now you almost start going down a rabbit hole of like, do we really wanna?
Is it better just to do a percentage of coverage? You know?
Yeah, perhaps.
Fields may only forty percent of, or whatever.
Cuz I mean, even soccer fields, you have different sizes based on the age of the participants.
Correct.
So you can't just say soccer.
Or do we just strike it and say, it is what it is?
I don't know that I necessarily wanna strike the whole thing. But I also don't know what a percentage coverage should be. Joe, do you wanna, uh, do a little research and?
Yeah, I'll just write down percentage coverage restriction instead, question mark, and I'll be my prompt to think about that some more.
Then seventeen twenty-nine ten outdoor shooting, um, should we add something for like safety precautions in there, or, um, like there is like a?
Such as like fencing or backstops or something?
Yeah, I mean, there's like dimension from the, how far away can be, but nothing really about safety. I don't know, like should there be a back way, something like that, that's what I was thinking.
So like perimeter fencing protection or something?
Something like that. Like, should our code say something about that, in my opinion?
Yeah, prob- I don't, I don't disagree with that. So I'll, I'll just write down sort of a look into that as well, kinda thing.
I think there's enough regulation on if you designate yourself as one of those facilities, what the requirement is based on distance to what's around you.
I tend to think there's probably building code implications to some of that too, but.
You can go to mound, you can go to plates, you can go to, there's, depending on the collection system, as a backstop, depends on what is around you.
Yeah. Sure, your insurance carrier's gonna have a lot to say about it too.
So, yeah, if you wanna investigate it, that's fine, but I think you're gonna find that there's other requirements that are already built into that.
And we're just talking about the outdoor ones, yeah, cuz the building code's already gonna account for any of the indoor stuff.
Well, even if you're an outdoor shooting range, you still have to qualify with a whole bunch of rules and regulations.
Yeah.
We can just refer to those.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we can refer to it.
I'll, I'll check into it. I can contact the building code folks, or sure there's standards out there that are.
Well, we got plenty of them around, so.
Yep.
My next one is seventeen forty-two, so.
Chip, you're being awful quiet down there. Any, any other, uh, sections you had comments on? I just have seventeen four zero dot zero one. Uh, daycare, this is more of a question, such play areas shall be enclosed with a chain link fence. Uh, do we have any requirements for fencing, and is this in, uh, conflict with those? Are chain links fences allowed on front yards?
Yeah, we don't restrict, we don't have architectural standards on, actually, I would probably, I don't know if we need to say chain link fence. I would probably get rid of chain link. It could just say, there might, you might need a better term in there, so someone doesn't put a split row fence. Again, I think, and did you run into this with Bright Path? I imagine there's state standards on that fencing.
Yeah. Um, yeah, there were some state standards on them, yeah.
I don't know what they are, but I can look those up, cuz that's, I already looked some of this stuff anyway.
It's most of the gap, concerned, yeah.
There's a gap requirement, but you have chain link in equivalent, you've basically said it has to be a security type fence.
Yeah.
Can we say strength and protect? I could, I could cite the state law and say, you know, in accordance with.
Honestly, I don't mind, I don't think it should be, it, you know, it should be, not be restricted to chain link fences, but I don't think chain link is a bad thing. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any requirements for front yard chain links.
So maybe we can keep it. No, there's nothing prohibiting it.
Okay.
Since we don't have an architectural review board.
Okay, forty-two?
Forty-two E, each window bay, each window bay or area designed for drive-through service shall be provided by reservoir stacking spaces per window bay, like, what is exactly meant by that? What's a little, what do you mean by the reservoir stacking spaces?
Oh, for drive-through, so that's, um, how many cars can line up at that window? And that's where I said I'll.
Probably what needs to be in the other.
Yeah, and that's where I said, when we were talking about that issue, I could refer back to this and see what we said here.
So, that would be blown out of the water with any dual window fast food restaurant. The space between window one and window two does not allow for five cars. You might have one car in each, one at a window, one in between, one at the next window, and that's it, for stacking. If you look at normal.
Yeah, I mean, some of, but we're basically, this there, this thing like what McDonald's has, where you have two order things and they, they merge back down into one, this would not allow that. They would have to get a divergence to do that configuration, because as this is written, you'd need to have a lane for each, what, think of, um.
No, but those aren't windows, that's not by your definition. A window would be.
Oh, I know, I see what you're saying.
The dual lane would be fine. It's the window, because you have a pay window and a get your food window, and there's normally only a one car space between the two.
No, you're right.
So you couldn't have.
Yep.
You couldn't say five for each window.
I see what you're saying. Or would you have to have five in between them? Would you have to have five window, and then if you had a second window, another space for five?
That's what that's saying.
Yeah, I think it is what it's saying.
No one will.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Your building's gonna be.
They'd be way too long, and you'd never have a queue anyone.
Alright. You want me to just stew on that a little bit?
Stew on it. I think if we say, if you want a five queue, um, pickup window kinda thing, back to what, five?
Well, I could just cross, you could just cross out window and just leave, and put bay or area designed for drive-through service.
Oh, boy.
Cuz if you do bays, now you're talking about like, I'm thinking Walgreens on State Street has like two or three bays, cuz you use the.
Which one?
Walgreens on State Street has at least two bays I know of, where you have like, you know, they have the pneumatic tubes that, well, they may not have it anymore, they, I think they got rid of pneumatic tubes.
Walgreens only has one.
They do, but I think they used to have two, cuz I think they used to have a pneumatic tube that served the second lane, and I think they got rid of it.
They have that one, Hoover has one at the pharmacy.
But you see a lot with banks, right? You have the multiple lanes and the tube services, the far lanes, and there's a little speaker system that you can talk to. So in that situation, you would want multiple stacking areas if it's a really busy drive-through. But there's only one window, so what I'm saying is you could get rid of window, cuz really concerned about individual lanes, not necessarily one lane.
So you're thinking about the drive, you were thinking drive-through, not as fast food drive-through.
Yeah, it could, this could be any kind of drive-through. This could be bank, this could be laundry.
Could you just call it a delivery service window? Where they deliver you something through that window?
If you have a quickie loop, because then you don't have windows.
I think that one qualifies as a drive-through facility, though.
Is the Chase in front of Meyer compliant with the way it's written? I don't, there's a Chase bank next to Tim Hortons, would that be?
I'm not familiar enough with their site.
Yeah, four lanes, they have four lanes, one of them's an ATM. Huntington across the street would be the same, but it's got four lanes. Two of them are Teller and two of them are ATM. You've got.
But do each of them have the stacking area that's listed here?
Chase would, absolutely.
I don't know how many cars, I'm not familiar enough with the Chase site to know.
It's wide, but it's not very deep.
I mean, we don't have to do five, again, that was a number, that was a standard I found elsewhere. If you wanna say, you know, three, we could do that, if you think five's excessive.
Well, but then we still need to worry about the two windows for the.
Well, that's why I suggested just striking out window.
So just call it a lane, drive-through lane, there must be enough.
Yeah, we could do that.
Enough queuing per drive-through lane of three vehicles.
That's really what we're concerned about, right, is. You want each lane to have sufficient stacking.
So it can be, it can be more, but it must be a minimum of three.
You gotta be able to show on your little diagram that you can fit five cars.
Okay.
Okay.
You can stew on that, alright.
Okay.
Seventeen forty-five dwelling live work, um, I just had like, should we put something in there that the owner of the dwelling and the, the owner of the dwelling and the business should be the same person? If that needs to be in there.
Which section?
Um, seventeen forty-five.
In general, you have.
Yeah, just a general addition to it.
As an addendum to one of the lines, or do you wanna add like a point?
Just a, just a new line probably, like, uh, the owner of the dwelling and the business needs to be the same.
Sorry, Paul, could you jump to the definitions again?
Cuz this is specifically for like a live work kinda type thing.
Is that a new definition or an old one, Joe?
That's a new one, brand new concept. It's gonna be under dwelling, Paul.
Forty-five dot ten.
Yeah, I mean, except if it's in, I mean, we can repeat it, I guess, but I mean, if you think it's not necessary.
Cuz I think we're gonna find is you're not gonna qualify as one per the definition, so we would never even get to the standard. I thought it was under dwelling.
Yeah, you passed it.
There's accessory.
Just pass it a little bit.
Yeah, I think it's on the next page.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah. By the resident of said dwelling.
Yeah.
Yep. So, if you're not the, you're not gonna qualify as a live work dwelling if you're not.
Okay.
Cuz then it's basically becomes a traditional multi-mixed-use building.
I was just like, yeah, if we have to have it in here or not.
No, I get that, yeah, we, so I think we've got that base covered.
Did you see another one? Just type out seventeen forty-five dot oh three, it's got seventeen zero four five, seven zero on it.
I got it. Numbering this was really fun, I can tell you.
Well, this section especially, since you, eight pages of deletion and eighty pages of ad, so. Alright, what's your next one, Sebastian?
Seventeen fifty-four food hall, uh, should we include, say anything about food trucks? I mean, just knowing that a lot of these things do sometimes get food trucks.
Probably not a bad idea, cuz some of them do sort of incorporate those, don't they? Oh, we lost our connection. We have to watch Kung Fu Panda. I could just basically add that this food hall is subject to, um, the standards set forth for yada yada uses that we already have in here.
Okay, I got no interwebs. Oh, wait, I'm back. I still have mine thinking this. So you're gonna add food truck to food hall?
Food truck, food courts, all those related.
So you're gonna change the title to include all, or do you wanna just?
No, I'll just add a standard that basically says, this use shall also.
Okay.
Where applicable, comply with the standards for this, this, and this use.
Okay. Next. Any more?
Seventeen sixty-one home occupation.
Seventeen sixty-one.
So, um, seventeen sixty-one oh one A, um, there shall be no more than two non-residential employees or volunteers to be engaged in the proposed use. And I think that contradicts sixteen eighteen, which says it's only one employee.
That's because if you trigger, so the way it's cur, so that's existing verbiage in the code, it's just relocated. So the way the current code says is, if you wanna have two non-residential employees, you have to go get conditional use approval. So that's why it's in two different sections. So if you exceed sixteen eighteen, you are now into the standards of six, seventeen sixty-one.
Okay, alright. Mobile enterprise court seventeen seventy-five. Should we include something for an onsite dumpster slash trash bins or something like that, like definitely do a mobile thing?
Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea. Have you, in your experience, have you been to any of these? Like, are these really a thing yet?
There's one in Delaware, like a food, like, I closed at the trace, train station, it had one.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you have trash cans there, cuz people eat there, so it's like, at that point, like, you need to do something with that trash, so.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea to require them to have a dumpster.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like a centralized dumpster of some sort, with some screening, subject to.
And I have seventeen seventy.
Put a size restrict, size minimum on it?
Like, are you worried that someone's gonna put too small of one, or too big a one in? What's the standard, do you know the standard size on that?
Well, I mean, let's just say you put a.
I can, I can probably Google standard dumpster size.
Well, it's a, it's probably a four yard, if it's enclosed, it's a dump, if it's, so it puts a little open top.
Well, I don't think we'd want open top, right? Whatever the standard size, I'll go to some vendor who lists them, and I'll look at the one that looks like the average size and.
Side load, dumps in the overheader.
Yeah, I'll look at some of the sizing issues.
I think it's seventeen seventy-seven mobile home parks.
Okay.
I don't know, for, I would kinda propose to have, um, Um, I don't know, for, I would kinda propose to have um, a barrier around mobile home parks, like a natural barrier landscape.
Oh, like a, like a greenscape perimeter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea. Now, I'm trying to think, where do we allow these? Would that be required under the landscaping standards or not?
While Joe's looking that up, do we currently have any mobile home parks?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Nah.
Closest one I can think of is that one over in Harlem.
Yeah, and I'm just.
Yeah, there's one on Danshire. Fancher.
Yes.
There's one on Fancher. But that's just outside of us, right?
Yeah. So we would only allow them as a conditional use in RR. So yes, it probably wouldn't be subject to Article twenty. So if there's supplemental landscaping standards you want, we should put those in there.
I'm pro that.
I'm.
Would you like to have a barrier with like.
Makes sense to me.
Trees, I mean, something, if you don't wanna see it.
Drive by. Well, so, what size?
I don't know. What are you thinking, Joe?
So we're saying it's gotta be a setback from fifty?
I can draft something up for you if you don't wanna try to flush out the specifics here.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
So this is uh, leads me to a comment I have on another category, which is sexually oriented businesses.
Yep.
Do we have any sexually oriented businesses in Joe's touch-up?
No, but you absolutely wanna have standards for them.
Now, my question is, do we want to allow them at all?
You have to.
Are we required? Were required?
Well, here's what can happen, is if you don't allow them at all, they could challenge you and take you to court and strike that provision. And now, by losing that court case, now they're allowed everywhere.
Anything you want.
So you're much better off saying they're allowed in this location and.
Particular situation. Is that the same about the mobile home park if we said?
Yeah. Generally speaking, you have to allow every use somewhere.
Okay.
With the exception being these marijuana businesses that have li, that the state has put specific provisions in the revised code that says we can outright just ban them.
If we zoned like every square mile, some sort of education or religious uh, zone, then we couldn't have them.
Now, they could make a case that you clearly, you know, by de facto zoned us out of your community, they could make that. So you gotta be a little careful with that.
Careful.
But we also can't control where a private school sets up shop, so.
For the record, that was satire.
Yes. We won't include that in the minutes.
Alright, next one.
That brings me to um, seventeen ninety-five residential care facilities. And I just wondered how you came to the number thirteen twenty, cause since we're talking about these numbers about distance, like, why is a sexual orientated business a thousand feet from these things? And this is thirteen twenty, that makes, it's just a weird number there for me. Like, and why can we not make the sexual orientated businesses then?
I'll have to see, I pulled that language from somewhere. Residential care facilities, we gotta be careful with because there is some state um, regulatory provisions that get involved with, because they know a lot of communities would just outright prohibit them if they had their druthers. So in the interest of fair housing, our hands get a little tied on it. I'm pretty sure that language came from somewhere. I'd have to look back up to where I, I pulled it from though. I don't know if I pulled it from Westerville or.
Was that a Griggs? Suggestion?
Oh, possibly.
I think that was a Griggs suggestion.
You know what? That could be it. That might be existing language that we just ported over that I got from Peter Griggs.
I think it's Pete's, yeah.
That sounds familiar.
Cause I remember looking.
Cause we re, you're right, we reworked that a few years ago.
That's a quarter of a mile. I bet that's why.
Yeah, that's. So there's probably like a reasonableness standard that comes into play from a legal standpoint.
So just ver, if you can verify.
Yeah, I'll verify.
It came from legal, that would be great.
Actually, I could probably, if it's, if it's in this existing code, I can a hundred percent guarantee you that that's where it would've come from.
Where was it?
Uh, it was in seventeen, I think.
Seventeen?
Yep.
It was.
It was seventeen oh four. And it is in there already. And I'm pretty sure the language we used to update this several years ago was language I got from Roche Johnson.
Yes.
I'm almost positive.
I think you were here when we did it.
Yes.
Chairman left.
Okay, next.
Seventeen one twenty, vacation rental complex. Should, should we have a maximum number of rental units?
Oh, in the complex?
Yes.
My thought was these complexes were specifically designed for this purpose. Like, you know, you go to Florida or you go to the beach and they just have these complexes everywhere up and down lining the beach and that's, that's really what they exist for.
These are conditional, right?
Yeah, we don't obviously allow them everywhere.
No, I know, but I mean.
Conditional and special use.
Oh, we're good.
I can tell you where, how we're allowing them or where we're allowing them. I just gotta find it. I don't think we're considering them rent uh, do you consider those residential?
You like.
No, we're not even considering them residential uses. We're considering, even though they sort of look and feel like residential, we're considering those still commercial operations.
Right. My thing is also this, because like, if someone who developed this with a density higher than a PRD, you're gonna get what a PRD is, but it's gonna be vacation rentals. So I'm just saying, there probably should be some kind of density standards.
They would be conditional uses in the s, in the C, in the community business district or a special standard use in the PCD. So we actually would only allow them in our commercial districts. We're not even allowing them in residential.
I know, but you could create something that looks like PRD, which are.
Correct.
Vacation rental, that's my, my concern. And, and, and there is no limit to your density then?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, cause I remember, cause we had that discussion about mixed use, whether or not we still needed to restrict, you know, there was gonna be a need in the traditional non-residential zoning districts to make sure we still accounted for density. So I'm flipping back here real quick. I know we did that in PCF district, cause we already have uses of a residential nature allowed in there. Sorry, I'm just trying to see if. But I agree with the, the premise of the comment though. If we don't address it, that we need to. That's administration. I'll look at that. But I would probably suggest we just mirror the language we used in like the PRD.
But so, so would we be a rental unit? I mean, they're different, probably different size than a, a home, right?
Yeah, a lot of them tend to be smaller than a traditional home.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll look at that, cause I agree. I agree with you.
Okay.
I got warehouse minis, mini and or self-storage seventeen uh, one hundred twenty-three. I was like wondering if we should have a percentage of how much outdoor storage they can have. Uh, cause I mean, I know a lot of these, these storage facilities do tend to do that.
Yep.
The one that just came from for the BDA, they have that also.
Yeah, and we're gonna.
Be like a restriction on how much could be, is, is indoor, is actually a building. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Storage.
Do you have a percentage in mind? Do you wanna do like?
I don't know. I, I don't know. What are you guys thinking? I mean, is, is that something you're, you're concerned with? If, if, if it's full of cars or full of RVs or?
Boats, yeah.
What's, what's the difference if it's lot coverage?
Well, just that you can visually see what's being stored.
Yeah, visually you're, it's gonna be messier. That's my only thing.
I give a thumbs up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
You're looking right at me. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Might lose that vice chair position, huh?
I mean, it's just, it's just kinda messy. That, that's just my main concern. Cause otherwise you basically, what, what, what could happen, okay, is that you just get a parking lot full of cars.
Yes.
There's gonna be store there. That, that's the, like, an, an um, that's something that could happen.
Okay.
Now, we do have storage yard.
There's, there's a, yeah, but there's a definition. Cause there's a self-storage definition too.
Correct. So we say storage yard is any land or portion thereof that is primarily utilized by a non-residential entity or customer renting said area in whole or in part for outdoor storage of items other than junk. But I think to Mr. Bernard's point, I don't think there's necessarily anything precluding a self-storage warehouse from having outdoor, I mean, that's very common. We see that frequently.
I know some are covered, even if it's uh.
Yeah, and we even say you could have them be in exterior, even in the definition.
Alright, so if we think about uh, it's not car driving, it's more ways of storage. Which one is that?
And the outdoor storage, I can tell you, is very popular in this area, cause of the rest of ours.
So we've got, they came back changed because they asked for a use permit change to store RVs underneath the power lines, cause they couldn't build the structure.
Correct.
That was a few years ago. So if we think about that, is it twenty percent of the, twenty-five percent of the lot size that is now outdoor storage?
So do you wanna just say twenty-five, since it's sort of a, again, reasonableness kinda number? Even though it is sort of a feel thing?
Sure, and I would also add that it needs to be behind the building, but that's, that's my personal opinion. I mean, like in that case, they could come for a diversion request, but I mean.
You want it behind building or maybe just a setback restriction on it?
Interesting thing, cause you can drive by other stor, outdoor storage and they've got them parked up against the fence. Which then you don't see the building, because everything else.
Now, we would have screening requirements for it. So even if it was closer to the road, we're gonna have some of these screening provisions, but. But it's the same, it's sort of the same theory as the gas station.
It's gonna go over a fence. I mean, you're gonna see all that stuff.
Or a boat on a trailer and.
Yeah, you're gonna see the mast and stuff stick up.
So, what's reasonable? Wanna start at twenty-five and figure out what?
I'm fine right now. I just wanna put something in right now for sure.
I like it behind, behind the building and the primary structure.
Yeah, I can try to write something up. Twenty-five percent seems right, cause they can come and ask for a different percentage.
So no more than twenty-five percent of lot coverage.
Yep, got it. I'll flush out the word, the exact word.
Must be screened, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. Alright, next?
This was it for seventeen.
That's it for seventeen, really? Are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, anybody else for seventeen? I don't think we need to keep going this evening.
I think, I think that's right.
I think we.
About burned out, nine forty.
We can deal with sign standards later in nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So what do we have left?
Yeah, presenting parking is gonna be a lot of discussion. Yeah.
Yeah, always is.
I just, I just wanna put one thing up and I, I emailed you about that, Joe, that um, I do wanna have a conversation, it doesn't need to be today, about plan standards. Like, like the guys who presented today about what their plan. I mean, I feel like we need, like, there needs to be some kind of standard before, cause that was really not a great plan. That was very hard to read. They have land posts, like, land posts are in the parking spot. How is that possible? I mean, that's not possible. It's either, you have to have a distance from those land po, uh, land posts. I mean, there needs to be some kind of standard, like, number to parking spaces, like.
So I, I agree with you. And I know we've had this conversation before in meetings about at what point can an applicant come before the commission? And I don't wanna speak for you, but I know you, you've voiced before that you're hesitant to tell an applicant, that basically they have a right to come at any point in time that they want to. But I agree with you also that holy cow, there's a, there's, there's a lot of gaps in that plan. And I'm not faulting you.
No, no, I understand that. The real struggle and the commonality between G Marcos and like what we're talking about tonight is it's the amended plans. That's the problem. Not, I don't wanna say, but, that's the challenge. Because they're working off a drawing from two thousand seven and all they're technically legally obligated to do is just update and supplement to deter, prove compliance. If their foundation of the plan is not great to begin with, it's hard for the applicant to have to clean all of that up. So that's the challenge. When we're talking a brand new plan, it's a lot easier, cause they, you're start from scratch. You're just doing it all fresh. They are taking existing site drawings, exist, existing text and having to basically redline it and update it. So what you're starting to ask them to do is throw everything away. Every time you wanna amend the plan, throw everything away and give us a brand new package. I think you wanna be careful about how, what those expectations are, because that, that's where it gets, it's challenging. It's challenging for staff to advise them because, on these amendments, cause a, again, we just recently were ju, again, GMark is a bit different scenario because of how many amendments it went through. But um, that's really the trick, is there's really not a great way for the code to anticipate what condition the final development plan they're trying to update it is in. If they're doing one from the past few years, I'd like to think we've all done our jobs really well and it's a nice clean plan and it'll be much easier to update as opposed to, but some of these from the further back you go have less and less to work, for them to work with.
So let me ask the question though, is it unreasonable to request or to set the standard for an applicant that when they come here, the issue facing the commission is divergences?
Right.
Not, well, you, you didn't
Right.
put the lighting standard in here or the cut sheets for this, that or the other. To me, that, that's I don't wanna say elementary, but that should already be done before it comes here. I mean.
Mr. Schaefer, is there, are there submission requirements listed in the resolution? Like, site plan must include these seventeen things?
There are again for like the new fresh submissions.
Right.
The challenge is, the amendment standards are a lot more vague, because we just don't know, to what degree are you amending the plan? What is the condition of the plan? There's so many variables, it, it's almost on a case by case basis with the amendments. That's why it's hard to say. And again, you have to think about, to what degree do you wanna be, you wanna be fair, right? Because if you're striking out three lines in an amendment plan, but now we're gonna say, yeah, but sorry, the code change, you need to now spend thousands of dollars to update everything just because we changed our code and we want everything to match, when all they're doing is striking out three lines or changing a few things, moving some chairs around on the drawing, figuratively speaking. So I, I think the commission approached it right, and I think you're right, it largely is the divergences. And, you know, staff is not in a position where I can I do my best to anticipate how each one of you are gonna feel about something, but we've got some newer members, we've got, each one of you, I just can't, I don't. I always tell applicants all the time, I cannot predict how five independently minded people are gonna think about a topic. I just don't know. So that's why we have these meetings, is they have to come to these meetings sometimes and then I, they hear the feedback, I hear feed, feedback, and then I go, okay, now we know what the expectation is. What, what you need to see to feel comfortable with that divergence and then that stuff, they have to go back and change. I wish we could get that all cleaned up and done ahead of time. There's just, that's the reason for these meetings, is I always tell them, I can only get you so far, but the commission could have comments, concerns, questions beyond me. The only way to know those for certain is to come to the meeting and, and start flushing it all out. That's the process.
I mean, this was their first meeting, so it, it's okay, but I'm, like, they're talking about, they're having an architect, so I mean, that person can definitely draw this out and come with the right measurements. I mean, how can we, how can we come, like, look over a plan and then we need to like, look over the standards that we have in, in the resolution, but if the, these dimensions are not mentioned or not right, how can we judge that? I mean, it's.
Well, and that's the feedback they need to hear, and that's really only feedback that you can provide. I mean, I don't, I don't mean to be flippant, but that is the job.
That's the job.
Up here, is to get down in the weeds and tell them that. I will do the best I can, you know, and I try to remember that stuff through these meetings of, I know X member's gonna wanna see this, so I try to remind them of this. Now, if we wanna codify certain things, we can do that, but like I said, it just gets really messy with the amendments, because we just don't know. It, they're, none of them are the same. Each amendment is just totally different in the nature that we're dealing with. You know, amending the Genoa Baptist plan is gonna be radically different than amending a plan that was approved in nineteen ninety-six. Like, there, it's gonna be night and day. So I don't know how I could write standards that anticipate both of those scenarios.
Well, I mean, I guess just looking at this binder, the plan, the one sheet of nine.
I mean, they do call out other sheets.
Right.
I know, I know, I know.
But this isn't, we don't even know who the architect is that drew this.
No, they, they didn't have an architect.
I think they did themselves, probably.
Yeah, I think somebody did that in their basement.
Well, full disclosure, I mean, we shouldn't talk about that specific application too much, cause that hearing, we did technically close it and they're not here, so. But um, I mean, I can't tell you, one of the applicants is an engineer. He was the civil engineer who did the multisound, the work for multisound. He, he didn't come, I think he was at the last meeting with the trustees, but he did a lot of the background engineering work for that plan. Now, who they have as an architect, I don't know. I'm sure they're using somebody. They'll have to use somebody to get the building permits.
My only concern is, I feel like, like, I, I don't like voting on something if I cannot find the right information on something that's.
Well, no, and I understand, I think you're, that's. Well, no, and I understand, I think you're, that's completely, you're right, which is why they need to hear that, you need, the commission needs to tell them specifically, in order for me to feel comfortable voting on this, I need to see X, Y, and Z, but they need to hear that specific, they need to know specifically what it is you really. Give them a checklist, do this, do this, do this, do this, do this, do this. If you just say, this is hard for me to read, they're gonna say, okay, but.
How can I?
How can I fix that? They need that exact punch list from you.
So in your opinion, do they have the punch list right now?
I don't know if they have, hey, we wanna see every space marked with a number, uh, but I do think they had a pretty good idea that you wanted to see a lot more clarity in terms of how the draw, the dimensions, um, the hatching, the color.
Joe, I don't think you should answer that question, I don't think without them here, I don't think.
Yeah, that's, that's probably a good point. I mean, if they don't, they'll ask me, and I can always ask, you know, the, I could talk to the chair and say, hey, this is one hearing from the applicant, what's your expectation, now he can't speak for the rest of you, but at least I can talk to the chair and say, what do you think, um, about this particular topic, I don't, I try not to do that if I don't have to, though. So I mean, it's, topic, yeah, we can, that's always been the challenge, is me trying to figure out, like, even with these applications, I'm starting to tell the applicants, and I told this applicant, I'm giving you this report just so you can be prepared for the meeting, the expectation is not for you to do all these changes and try to get it all cleaned up before the meeting, that's not the reason I gave you the report in the advance, I give it to you in advance so you can start working on the changes, and you even heard that tonight, oh, Joe gave us a week before, so we've already started working on the changes, that's the idea, is really, they, if I get it out a week before this meeting, they theoretically have two weeks to make all the revisions. In, in most calendar situations, so, but the amendments are tough.
Alright, so, we had sixteen through twenty, we made it through seventeen, so we've got eighteen, nineteen, and twenty still to go, my guess is that takes up a crap ton of time for the next one, so, no extra homework?
Yeah, landscape twenty's pretty voluminous with landscaping stuff.
Yeah, I don't think we need any extra homework for the next meeting, we'll just deal with eighteen, nineteen, twenty, make sure we work through that again, is everybody sort of in agreement on that?
Yes.
You good with that?
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
So be prepared on eighteen, nineteen, twenty, okay?
I'll do what I can to get some of these changes written up and out to you as, as soon as I can.
Alright, next meeting is May thirteenth. We have anything, so we're gonna have?
We've not received any new applications on anything, uh, let me see, what is our calendar here?
So we're gonna have.
So May thirteenth, April eighth, yesterday, was the rezoning application deadline, we didn't get anything. Next Monday will be the application for final development plan applications, or development plan amendment applications. We could possibly see the old lawn center application come in. I haven't talked to them lately, but at one point I thought their target was to be in front of you in May, so we'll see if that's still the case, so.
And we're, and we're planning on Romelli one.
Romelli, yeah, the, the office complex you continue tonight will be on that agenda, so you'll for sure have one.
We'll have that, we'll have this one, so that's.
Oh, and this one too, so you for sure have two, yeah.
We'll have two, we'll have three more chapters to do on resolution, and potentially one more.
Yeah, with the, again, I don't wanna get too much, the office one, you know, the daycare was out.
Yep.
And then, um, it, it sounds like they're really trying to figure out signage is primarily what they're trying to figure out, cause they don't know who the tenants are yet, so they're trying to figure out, how do they write this, to anticipate that.
Electronic scroll and sound.
You just changed it.
Go ahead. Motion?
One or. To the chair, we have just public comment, we'll open it up there.
Uh, we had public comment earlier for the hearing, I don't think we need to have.
We've got it on your agenda here after all the business.
Joe, is that something we've gotta do?
I mean, it is on the agenda, so out of fairness, that would be the justification.
No, I don't, you don't need to tell me what I get to do, how's that?
Parliament, parliamentary procedures you do.
Well.
I can make whatever choice I want.
The commission does have the op, it's not required, the commission could opt to just not accept public comment this meeting, cause it's not required by law, cause this isn't a hearing, so it's really up to the commission as to whether or not you wanna open the floor to comment. It is on the agenda, though, it was published that way, cause we all, that's the standard template.
Alright, public comment, five minutes.
Rick Whelan, ninety-five hundred, Gritten Woods Drive. Couple things here for your zoning commission, I'm kinda think you guys need to go back and review your purpose on what's going on here, I hear a lot of divergent stuff, we have a zoning code we're supposed to come up with here, and that's supposed to be followed, and you guys seem to be approaching it as it's just a, you know, a walk in the park, and people can come in and get divergences and changes from everything for the zoning code. We need to stick with what we have and make a, a relevant zoning code for representing all the people in this township. I've been to BZA meetings and stuff, and things are getting variances right and left or whatever, and there just seems to be a lot of different stuff as far as the purpose of this zoning commission, seems to be missing the point of what's, what it's for, so I think somebody needs to revisit some of that stuff, number one. Number two, for Joe, for these applications being turned in here, I worked down in the city of Bexley, when they turn in an application for a review or anything like that, it has to be accepted through the staff before they're allowed to have a meeting. You guys are getting stuff presented up here with napkin stuff almost drawing on it, I can't believe Joe's even letting these guys present this stuff to you guys, same with the BZA meetings, get the same stuff, they're coming unprepared for things, and then it's wasting the board's time and they have to come back two or three different times. I think it's up to his job to get you guys proper documentation before these guys come before you. On section sixteen. Dave, did he, did, uh? Did Joe send you any information on some stuff I turned in?
I have an email with public comment.
As far as the garages and stuff, and, and heights and stuff like that for section sixteen accessory buildings, did he give you a diagram and stuff that I've sent in or not?
I have an email from public comment.
Did you turn it over to any other members of the board yet or not?
An email from public comment.
What's that mean? You have an email, it's sitting in your email? Alright, board members, I've got some stuff that you guys need to take a look at on section sixteen, as far as accessory buildings, the whole, the whole thing that we have for accessory buildings is a pile of crap, as far as how it's set up, and I think it needs to be revisited, and you guys need to spend some special time and stuff on it. So I came up with a diagram and some st- some specs and stuff for it, based off of stuff that's been done in Franklin County, exactly, and I think you really need to consider it, cause our stuff is out of date, it's been mixed up back and forth in previous zonings, a lot of this stuff comes from the height requirements and stuff, as far as the definition of height, what it is, how it's calculated, what it is for the principal structure, and then what it is for accessory structures. And all of our stuff is based off of, we're dealing with lots that are two acres to five acres, and you guys are allowing the same zoning on those particular areas, which is a big difference in square footage when you go from two acre to a five acre property, it needs to be a proportional setup, different from what it is now, so I want you to consider it. And if you guys need to have some special time with me, I'm wide open or whatever, give me a call and I'll come in and explain it to you, but I think we need to have some serious changes and discussion on it, thank you.
You got anything? Okay, public comments closed.
Chair, I'd move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call it favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Meeting adjourned, nine fifty-five PM.